Good evening, everyone. This is Wayne, no, it's Winston, February the fifth, twenty twenty five. This is a special board meeting for the board to go over the budget with the superintendent. It's still the superintendent's budget and we're gonna go over it. In attendance, we have Mike Whitney, Matt Schulman, Jen White, Adrian Johnson, Dean Antipas, and Ian Thomas, and we have Jay online and Dr. Ackerman online.
And Ray.
And Ray. Okay, yeah. All right, so the first item is we're gonna discuss items from the previous budget meetings. If you have anything that you wanna bring up from previous budget meetings, anything that you thought about after the meeting was adjourned that you wanna talk about.
Um. You're looking at me, so I.
Well, you said home, so we thought.
Oh, I just only said home after you were looking. So, I don't know, I am curious, like, we brought up last week that there is some discrepancies between the fuel numbers in our ongoing during the budget update as part of our regular meeting. There is that number, the fuel cost number that Mike brought up.
I know we're working through, Mike had given us several suggestions to investigate, and I know Lori said today that they were working on that and we should have information for you next week. They're going through that. Ray, am I saying that right? Did you work with Lori on that?
We've been, we spent most of the day updating it. He has some changes that he's putting through. I think the fuel may have been updated by now because that was, correct me if I'm wrong, it could have been two meetings ago, not the last one, the one prior to that, that the suggestions were made to modify them and bring into into alignment with the previous budget, so.
You know, they were also working on the, all the suggestions made for the narrative. We just haven't copied all the book yet. We just, you know, made those, but we'll definitely get you out, especially in digital form, all those corrections, and I can even list them for you.
I appreciate it.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to follow up. Basically, I was hoping to get some clarity on those, those numbers, if they were inadvertently changed from the twenty twenty five approved budget, or if there was like a transfer of some kind similar to these that, you know, just needs to be accounted for so that we know that the twenty twenty five budget numbers are
I think.
Are up to date.
Ray, with the other numbers that Peter had put back, he just really, he just re-corrected it so that it was all lined up with the actual approved budget. Is that right?
Correct.
So that was just, yeah, put back into place the way it should have been.
Yes.
We don't know why it got that way, to tell you the truth, but we got it back to the right spot.
All right.
We really tracked the things that we noticed that were the real essential ingredients to some of the, you know, edits that needed to be made.
All right, appreciate that. And also just to follow up on Jen's question, the one hundred and fifteen thousand, that was allotted for the budget software transfer in the twenty twenty five budget. That's still like identified, right? That's not been used for another purpose, has it?
I don't, I don't know that it has. I think, Ray, you're gonna look into that, too. Can you put that on your list of things to double check on? The hundred and fifteen thousand for the software for specifically for the budget process, I think.
Yeah, right.
Okay, I'll do some digging on that.
Okay, thanks.
Hopefully get an answer for you sooner than later.
That's it for me.
You said, any other comments or Adrian?
Yeah, I've got a couple. On the thirteenth, we requested, or I requested, what's on the partnership plan and the insurance impact on retirees, I think that was Ian's question. Did we ever get those?
Is that on the FAQs?
Yeah, it just says, we'll update with new rates.
Okay, I'll remind Lori.
All right.
Yeah.
But we haven't got the new rates yet, did we?
We haven't gotten the new rates.
Well, the state, I believe, already has it, right? We haven't gotten it from our insurance company, but I was just wondering what the.
So for the state partnership, we can look into that.
Okay.
What are the new, with the new rates, right?
Is whatever, just to know what it is.
Yep.
Thank you for bringing up retirees.
Yeah, and, and there has been a lot of talk about the retiree, the effects on retirees.
Right.
Know what's, know what that actual is, maybe it'll be better, but, but. And then para educator reduction at Fitch, I asked for some, some data, you know, to kind of go with that, to say that that's, you know, we're serving our students better because we, seems like our staff, I don't have the numbers right in front of me, but went down substantially at Fitch to like two-thirds of what it was this year. And, and you know, also that, you know, like, on the outside, it has an appearance that maybe we're just having a hard time getting enough paras. So we're, you know, so IAPs, you know, are be changing. And, and what ended up on the FAQ was just a guidelines for paraprofessionals, but that didn't, so that didn't really answer the question at all.
Right, okay.
So, and then another thing, I asked for the average special ed teacher caseload. And the answer was that the caseload for special ed teacher in elementary is thirteen and secondary is twelve.
That's just the average. And then I think she talked about the range, and I'm, I don't wanna quote her, but I felt like the range was sometimes less than, you know, twelve, thirteen, but, you know, up to like seventeen is what I recall, but I can get you, like, the range would probably give you a better sense.
I actually did it, and I did the math because it seemed like that was way too low. My, well, my question is, is do we need more special ed teachers? That's, that's why I wanted to, that's why I asked what the caseload. So, based on the special ed teachers that we have in the budget, the ratio at Catherine Conoski is sixteen students to, to teacher. Charles Barnum, seventeen, Mystic River Magnet School, eighteen, Northeast Academy, twenty-one. Thames River Magnet School, eighteen and a half. Rod Middle School, eleven point four, and Fitch, nine. So that's based on all of these numbers with the numbers of special ed students. So it's nowhere near the thirteen.
Does it actually say the averages that per caseload?
Well, I did the average in each individual school.
Uh huh.
And the lowest one was Catherine Conostia, sixteen. But on the FAQ, it says that the average in elementary was thirteen. The average of what I get in elementary is around like eighteen or so. So, so substantially different, and that's a, it's a big variation from what we were told.
Yep, I can, I will definitely double check that. I, we know the exact caseloads of every teacher, so I'll look at that with Denise to get that.
All right, so.
Are today case load, I'm sorry, guys.
Yeah, I know, I just, I remember before I was on the board, just hearing that, that caseloads were very high in COVID, and everybody understands, like, things were a little bit crazy and everybody was trying to hold it together. But, but these caseloads seem tied with what I would typically expect, and, and I just wanna make sure that the budget, if we need to, to.
Thank you.
You know, to reduce that, that we're taking care of that.
I know that we proposed an additional special education teacher for elementary. Don't know exactly where that one is going, but we might need more than one.
Yeah, I think there was, it was Mystic River.
And Thames, maybe.
Yeah, the Thames or CK, it was the other, but it was a half, I think, for each is what the.
Right.
But, but is that enough? Is it the right place? I mean, Northeast Academy, twenty-one. You know, the ratio seems pretty high.
We usually monitor that three times a year. So we get the principals in, and we don't only look at caseload. We also look at hours required in their IEP, cuz that makes a difference, too. It's not just the caseload. Some kids have very few hours. They maybe see a resource room teacher for a little bit of each day, and then some need more. So you have to look at both the caseloads and the hours required. So I will look at that with Denise and get you more information.
All right. Yeah, I mean, I would expect Mystic River, probably more hours required because of the need in that school. But yeah, then we'll, we'll be talking about some of the other things later in this. All right, thank you.
Mike?
Yeah, I'd like to go through the, the green tab, the full-time equivalents, now that we've got you know, firm numbers for this proposed budget. Because that's the staffing part of, of the budget and, and, and kind of look at that and look through how it's changed versus last year's budget.
Can I ask a favor?
Yeah.
Didn't, Lori is not able to be with us tonight.
Yeah.
And so she is really the expert on that and explaining it. Is that something that we can do next Monday, and I'll make sure she's prepared and can be here with us to?
Yeah, that'd be absolutely fine. I was gonna make a suggestion, actually, as I was going through it, as comparing from one book to another, and I thought, well, maybe we should have the last year's set in the, in the budget, and then I thought, oh, that could get confusing. But it'd be, it, I think in this page, the green tab is so short that it really could have a nice narrative that just, almost like you're listing out the changes for, from one version to another for the budget, this could list out the changes. There are this increase here, decrease, however.
That's a good suggestion. I will talk to her about that, and maybe that's something we can put together.
Yeah, and it might even come through from the discussion itself. I think in the final budget, that'd be real helpful. So, cuz, cuz what I'm seeing is we're up probably like five or so, I, I guess, in, in the proposed budget, it's up in terms of total certified teachers, five point one from last year's budget. The total pairs, tutors, aides, and security is up twenty-one point one. The total clerical is up nine point eight, and I didn't mention the administrators, that's the other category that's down a half, and I didn't include the grant-funded part, just the, the BOE budget part. So, so the net is up thirty-five point six, I guess. Total FTEs, which they're, they're, I'm sure are reasons why we might wanna build that capacity, but that, that contest would really help.
Yeah.
That's all I have.
All right, thanks. I'll get back to you on that.
Definitely, thank you, thank you. Beverly, I may be out of line with this, but I'd like to say this. I find the, these, the things that have been brought up are extremely rich and worthy of discussion, but we've got Mark Romano here, and I'd like to propose that we, that we get Mr. Romano, his report, and then move on with the rest of it. Let me know if I'm out of line.
No, that's okay. Anybody?
Ask one question, and I know I missed Monday's meeting, maybe it was covered then, maybe it was covered in another meeting. If possible, do we ever get to the bottom of, and I'm gonna be using eleven oh one as an example? This is a sensitive topic. Wanna clarify, when we've noticed that under eleven oh one.
What page are you on?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm on five seven. Maybe this is a dicky, I have, but, under, under one oh one certified teachers, the entire last year's budget means ten million and something for, you know, the original proposed one hundred and twenty-six teachers, and we had one hundred and seventy, we'll be listed one hundred and twenty-six FTEs. So, you know, that and the ten million gets, gets you an average salary of, of A. Then you look at the proposed budget and the proposed FTEs, same number, I can say this, it's one more, actually, one twenty-seven, and then you get average salary B, and the increase of average salary A last year's versus average salary B comes to six point four percent left. We've thrown out numbers like seven, eight, you know, based on older, run over figures. So this, I'm presuming, is based on real numbers. I didn't mean to say that, and I'm pretty sure I quoted them, and I'll repeat it, that there is any teacher getting a six and a half percent increase in this budget. There's no way, as I understand the, the teacher's contract, certified, a personal contract, that anybody, by virtue of the fact that they're here an extra year, or that they got a, they moved over one column in terms of qualifications or what have you, that anybody is getting a six, six and a half percent increase. Nevertheless, in the aggregate, it looks like that. Have we been able to figure out why this would be? This may be just, like I said, some arithmetic phenomenon, you know, we've never got into. Like tricks with serial numbers on dollar bills kind of thing. So, was this discussed? Was this explored? Do we have an explanation for why this is?
It was not, but if what Mike just pointed out, that the FTEs increased by five, and you take like an average salary of five FTE increase, you subtract that, you might, that might be the answer.
All I'm saying is, if, we're, we're provided with the FTEs as, as page one for a given section, and then the dollars. And last year's adopted was one twenty-six under one oh one, relevantary, proposes one twenty-seven. I use those with matching dollars. So, are we, are we saying that the one twenty-six, one twenty-seven aren't actually one twenty-six or one twenty-seven?
Now, let's look at the green side, right?
That was like the only thing I could think of when you were.
That again is something that I can bring up to Lori and Ray, and we can examine more closely.
Yeah.
To get you the right answer instead of guessing.
Right.
And again.
So, you know, I'd be happy to do that.
For anybody watching, once again, I am not saying anybody's getting a sixty percent increase. I'll just say that's how the arithmetic works out. And it indicates either something interesting going on when you mass all these numbers together.
Well, you know, you've been, yeah, you've been on negotiations, so you know those steps are different at every level, and especially when they get to that top step, there's quite a jump, so it just depends on who's in those different areas.
Percent. And I can't see how one or two people, five people, half a dozen people are gonna generate that kind of a change in the aggregate, so.
They also get increased for their master's degree, so there's other factors in there, too.
Yeah, but how many? That, that's the kind of thing, I'm just curious. It may be all kosher, but.
Well, let me investigate that a little further for you and get you an answer, okay?
Anything else before we move on?
Just one suggestion. When it comes to the the special education caseloads, maybe one way to kind of handle the situation since there's variation in hours and caseload. Is there, do you, do you all have like a document that you track that in like real time? Is there a way to maybe just reproduce that with like all, every, all the names blanked out?
Yeah, but I'd wanna get the most updated, so what we do is usually fall and now, and then spring.
Right.
For the next year, so let me work on that.
Sure.
And we'll get that to you. It's gonna take a little bit of time, though.
Well, in March, we're gonna have on one of the COW agendas, we're having special ed one oh one.
Right.
Okay, so that will be on one of the agendas in March.
Sounds good, thank you.
Michael?
Yeah, my only other thing is the, the benefits, you know how we talked about it last time, where it's, it, it's hard to portion it appropriately, I guess, and it looks, it looks weird in some of the function codes. This doesn't have to be for the file version of the superintendent's budget, but before this goes outside of us, you know, to town council, et cetera.
We definitely wanna.
It'd be great if we could just have that. I'm, I'm not saying there's an easy way, but something more in line, so you can see it, you know, it kind of increases sort of proportionally to what was in past years. But I know there FT changes too, but something closer, because it struck me that, you know, ultimately, we've got this function code breakdown, but then we've got the sheet that just has each function code, and, and a lot of those increases, decreases, and the benefits are just driving the percent change, probably in ways that we don't want. Once you get down into the function codes, as you know, it takes, you know, day after day, looking at it, it starts to make more sense.
Well, that's what you all mentioned last time, and Ray, Lori, and I agreed with you. Ray, did you wanna say anything about that? Because I know that that's something we're gonna work on to get it in its own section. I think Lori even talked about some other insurances, too, that would be more likely, instead of through the function codes, they would be better separated out.
Yeah, we're, we're actually working on pulling them all in, too. I think it's eleven oh seven function code, I think, don't quote me on it at this point. But Peter is working on that now. He spent the better part of today realigning some of that. It's just not ready to present yet, cuz we're, we're doing.
Think we were gonna do non-classified or something like that?
Yes, we're basically moving it into the central, central.
Oh, district, yes, central officer, district-wide, right?
That, workers' comp, and Medicare, I believe.
Yeah.
Along with, there's one other, and it's slipping my mind right now, but we're trying to consolidate. That's what other districts do. We, we try, again, I'm, I'm not sure why Rotten tries to break it out the way it is, but it, it's, it creates a lot of extra work, as you guys noticed.
And it's not always exactly what we.
It's not scientific, let's put it that way.
So, so if we do that route, that'll, that'll be, it'll have to be like a highlighted, this is a change, cuz it'll make every function code, everyone that has staffing with benefits, it'll make all those go down.
Right.
And, but of course, there's a chunk somewhere else, so, yeah.
It, just for everybody's edification, it, it has been, I'm checking now, and it looks like some of these modifications have been created in the log. We just have to go back and manipulate the budget lines now to clean it up the way you want it.
All right, all right, moving along, we're gonna do student activities first, and it's on page five to seventy-five, that's seventy-one. Give everybody a chance to get to pages.
Mark, we're getting ready to do yours. I know you have a game, too. You've got lots of games.
Yeah, thank you.
At this time, this is more important.
Yeah. I don't know.
What to us?
It is to us.
Same to him, too, if he wants money.
You ready to explain anything, Mark?
Yeah, whenever you guys are ready.
We're ready.
Okay, sure. So, well, thanks for squeezing me in here. But first off, you know, I just basically kind of go over the increases as a whole that I was looking at, obviously athletic officials in those various accounts. You know, those prices go up annually, so you'll see a reflection in that for all our sports in regard to others.
Okay, can you tell us the line that helps us to orient?
It would be three forty-one would be the account number. Athletic officials. Which would, yeah, three, it's kind of quarter the way down.
Do the, do the officials get the same pay, whether they're basketball, football, softball, soccer?
That's a good question. They don't, they're all different organizations that they represent. You know, there could be basketballs, I ABO eight, footballs, you know, Connecticut High School footballs, officials. So there's different ones, there's different pay rates for each group of officials. And, and like I said, those annually, those go up annually, so, you know, I'm kind of preparing for that. Look for an increase in that area. Also, other services. And this is where we, you know, we, we've had more police at events lately, or more so the last few years, and, and an increase in our security here during athletic events as well. So you should see somewhat of an increase in those areas. Which.
Is that only due to the police, or is that due to other things?
Security guards, right?
Yes, yep, we have security guards at all of our, all of our games, depending on the, the, the type of game, I guess you could say, or the competitiveness of those games. We might have more at some events than we do others. And that's just to help with supportive crowd control. But we also, at least for our basketball games, we always have at least one police officer at those events as well. So, you know, that, that'll be reflected in there as well. The other area, travel. One of the changes we had, and we, we've kind of.
What travel line are you on, Mark?
Trying to see, based on what you guys have.
Four eighty-seven is travel for athletics.
Yep, or five eighty-seven, right? Five eighty-seven?
Yeah, did I say four? Sorry, five eighty-seven.
Yeah, you should, you should also see an increase there, obviously with our, you know, travel rates increasing. We've also had to, in, in the change in the contract with some of our sports, that we bus students to the facilities such as swim, boys and girls, softball, golf. So you, there'll be an increase in those. Those are everyday events, and we have gone outside to Gotten Parks and Rec has supported us with that and given us, you know, a rate that we get a smaller bus daily. They come to the school and pick up the students and then transport them to those facilities. We've also tried to use them a little bit as well with some of our closer away events to kind of cut back on the travel cost as well, so. But overall, you know, we have to prepare for the increase, so there is also an increase in that travel budget as well.
Can you, can you explain the increase on the stipends, one twenty-six? That's a big increase.
And there's a decrease on other student activities. Is there any correlation? Is it sometimes we're doing more sports and less student activities, or vice versa?
I think they were lumped together by accident.
Were they lumped together?
I think, yeah.
Yeah, no, we, we've, we've actually, you know, increased and tried to keep, we're trying to increase our number of sports, things that we offer, you know, both the.
I think Mike's right, cuz we have zero in the budget for others, so I bet we've put both the student activities with the sports. That does make sense.
Yep.
Can you double check on that for us?
Sure.
It can add up to five hundred and thirteen thousand dollars if I add those two lines together.
Yes.
No, that's still an increase.
Yeah.
It's still an increase.
Twelve point seven percent increase, fifty-seven thousand nine thirty-five, if you just add those, if you put those lines together, so. I'm sorry, I should have asked, but just cuz I just did the math. So are we adding any programs specifically that would cause, cuz I don't think the contract is fixed, right? You know, it's just gotta, you know, whatever, two or three percent increase per year. But are we adding programs why we have more, more employees getting stipends?
No, we have not added any additional programs. The only, the only, you know, changes that we would have would be through intramurals at the middle school level. But in regard to the high school, everything is, remain the same. In those intramural stipends, there's already accounted for, there's no change in those.
Can you give us a list, or do you have a list in this book? I didn't see it, of the stipend positions and how much they are?
They should be in the contract. We can get that in the FAQs.
Right, those, those are negotiated with the GEA, so I don't, those are kind of just given to me, and I, you know, I don't really have any part in those negotiations.
So, Mark, is it true that, like, I remember the newspaper didn't run for years, and finally they started using that stipend for the newspaper, so there have been times that stipends have been put on hold for after-school activities, maybe even for certain sports, but then when they it become popular again, our kids, you know, are looking for those kind of activities. We're able to open it up again based on the contract. So can you look at that with Matt for me and do a little bit of a deeper dive, and maybe with Peter, just to see?
Yep.
Where that, you know, why the fifty-seven thousand with the two of them together for me?
Sure.
And can we get a list of all sports stipend positions?
And that's in the contract, so I can get that for you, the FAQs. Put it in the FAQ.
Jen?
Um, I believe last year they were able to provide that information, cuz I remember seeing it by sport, by coach or whatever position, and then the rate. I distinctly remember seeing it last year, so I think we should be able to get it.
Yeah, we can get it.
Mark, sorry, putting you on the spot there.
No, that's okay, no, and also those are, I mean, that, those are also online under our, I think, human resource page, the, has the whole contract, the GEA, and all the stipends that are listed in there, in the dollar amounts.
Mike?
So, so I'm, I'm hearing that, that one twenty-seven other student activity stipend, it's zero, but there's no.
Sorry about that.
That's fine. There, there's no plans to, actual plans to zero out student activities stipends. It's just bundled in the other one for now.
Yeah, I mean, it, it is, I'm only, I only kind of deal with the sports piece to it. So if there's any, like, clubs or activities outside.
I think that's what they did, though, in our business office. I will just make sure that that's right. You, you caught that one, Mike. I think that's what they did though in our business office. I will just make sure that that's right. You, you caught that one, Mike. You get the.
We'll double check that.
Because I was saying, oh, one's down and one's up, like this, there's some anomaly and then I saw the zero, so I thought that's exactly what happened. But I will double check.
Budget do you know, Mark?
I'm mostly uh athletics is my uh area that I, you know, that I focus on. At both middle school and high school.
Any questions? None? Matthew? Okay, thank you, Mark.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you, everybody. Have a good night.
Good night.
Night, Mark. He doesn't know that. It's name.
What's next? I would say Anne Marie with her teaching and learning can go next. Then.
Teaching and learning.
That is five eighty-six.
Five eighty-six.
And it's five eighty-seven.
So, um, this is the teaching and learning page and it begins with uh line items one oh five and one oh eight. Which is administration. Oh, I'm sorry, starting with the program description here. In the teaching and learning budget here, just a short narrative, we support the implementation of a curriculum instruction across the district. And as the assistant superintendent, I oversee this as uh not only all curriculum, but kind of professional development uh and the implementation of those two items. Um, you'll see here that there are some staff members in this budget, I, uh, this, this, this budget as well. Including a curriculum coordinator position and a math coordinator. Uh, we can talk about that in just a few minutes. Um, actually, I'll get into it now. So you'll see here, starting with lines one oh five and one oh eight, uh, these are administrator positions. And I'm gonna get my blue bird here so that eyes can see these small numbers. Um, so these are the, this is the staff lines. You'll have the di- the data manager is in this uh, this budget. As well as the communication specialist, actually point five of that position. And that's a change and increase because uh that uh position used to be fully funded from a grant. And the six twelve curriculum coordinator, point five of that position was also funded. In this uh, in this particular uh section of the budget.
And I found out clerical administration, those are four different positions here at central office.
Yes.
In the teaching and learning and also in um, the um registrar's office. So they, they registrar works with the data, student data manager. So there's um, some collaboration there, teaching and learning.
So the, the curriculum coordinator position represents one math coordinator?
One math coordinator.
Well, it's a half, it's a halftime um position, she's not doing the teaching. So it's um, actually probably a point six.
Yes.
And it's this, we call her the STEM coordinator, but she does, she really does a lot of the math too.
And, and can you tell me about the communication specialist?
Yeah, so that person, as I said earlier, was, I believe, fully funded previously by a grant. And has a point five position had been transferred into this budget. Um, you know, we know that individual who is in that role sometimes has come here to present.
What do they do?
Uh, that person.
Want to know more about that?
Yeah, so that person does a lot of the communications for the district, whether it be uh monitoring and uh all of the communications. Uh, putting out communications for the district, parents wear messaging, Facebook.
She does a lot with family engagement as well. She works with the registrar and the lottery process. She does a lot of, wears a lot of hats.
The website, um, maintains the website, updates the website. Uh, right now we have her work, where I'm working on her with a project to do some more updating on um. The, related to the IB and EDP programs. Um, she just did a big project with the high school on their program of studies, making sure that it's a little bit more of an updated platform for parents and students to use. A little more user friendly than just like a word document, so they can access it on the website. So a lot of different things.
Um, in regards to the communication specialist, is that a, is that a full-time position that's being funded some from another function code or is it?
I think it's like an eleven month. I think it's a, it's part-time, but it's nearly full-time, so it's like an eleven.
I believe it is eleven months.
So that would be like a zero point nine FTE?
Something like that.
Where's the other point four in the budget?
I think this was just point five of her. Um, salary, because the rest is paid through the grant.
Is grant funded, yeah.
Okay, so she's still partially grant funded?
Yes.
And that, I think she's listed in the number, which um reflects clerical administration. I think it's holding on to anybody who is, you know, working in that teaching and learning, but it's not an administrator, not a teacher or coordinator.
And which grant is that pulling from?
That I don't know. I'm gonna have to get back to you on that. I'm not sure either. It's one of the titles, but I don't know which one.
As a, um, as an aside, is it possible just to get a list of all of the grant funded staff that we have?
We can do that. We're not, we haven't forgotten that. I know, and I, I, we're working on that. I know Ray is working on the grants and getting, you know, we had that for you last year earlier on. And I'm, we do want to get that to you, so I will talk to Ray about getting that list of grants and who, and number of positions in each grant.
Hi, Matthew.
Thank you. Uh, as we go from uh one category, one function category to another, the same questions seem to keep coming up. Well, how many of this and how many of that? And so I'm going to suggest, I know times, times to the commodity we're running out of. But if we could get a, if, if you feel comfortable with it as a board, if we could get a commitment that in next year's budget. Uh, there'll be a narrative below the funding indicating, you know, the, the particularities of each of these functions under each of these accounts. So for example, we would say clerical administration and down below the, for the, for the notes, it would say line one one fourteen. That consists of four people doing the following functions. Because these are the questions that were likely to be asked by council and it's very tough to tell them that we'll have to get back to you like that. So it'd be much easier to get it upfront for next year.
You, you could add something like that to the existing.
I think. Mike, I was wondering why it wasn't listed up there, so we can add that too, to make it more clear. So all we have to do is be here with the narrative.
Yeah, I, I'm not sure you have the time to do it this year, but if we could make that commitment to do that for next year, I think Ian had a question to follow.
I just wanted to build on that because I think maybe, you know, format wise, you know, I, I think if there's a opportunity to do an extra dropdown. Under the, under the line, you get the job title and the salary breakout that makes up a larger bunch.
Hopefully.
So like, we could get a understanding, like, okay, so there's four positions. You know, two of those make, you know, how many over a thousand and the other two make how many over a thousand a year, something like that.
We don't know that that's attainable until we get new software.
Oh, right, no, I'm just saying, in an ideal world, that would be a way to do it.
Matthew called Ian, I didn't call Ian, Matthew.
I'm sorry.
Jen was first.
Or Dean might have been before me.
I, that's what I said, I didn't call him, you did.
He said it his time.
But Dean might have been before me.
All right, Dean, go ahead.
All right, so.
Then I'm, no.
So under the FDEs, we've got one oh five, one oh eight bundled together. Um, I guess I could, I could say that the one FD for data manager belongs to the one oh five line. And the other two belong to the one oh eight line?
There's only, I think there's only one and it's a six tenths position.
Okay, well, it shows point five, so the, so the communication specialist, we were told, only some of it is funded by the grant. So where's the other, where the half that we're showing here, where's that reflected in the, in five eighty-seven? I don't see that. It's either under one oh five, but I don't think so, or it's under one oh eight.
It's under one fourteen from what I.
Or it's under one fourteen, yeah.
It, that is a little.
Wait a minute, so the communication specialist goes under one fourteen? Oh, okay.
The, the other part you're saying.
So what we need to do is find out who those other three are to add up to, and I can clearly define that, so I'm going to add that to the chart. How about that?
Okay.
It sounds good.
Yeah.
Oh, Jen, did I?
Oh, yes.
Yeah, it's okay. Um, I'm a little confused because um Adrian is asking for the list of grant funded positions. And in the green section, we have that. So are we saying that that's not a comprehensive list or is?
No, I think it's just, that green list, I think you just are wanting to see it, I guess spelled out a little better.
I don't know, did you see that Adrian on the, maybe Adrian didn't see it.
Okay, four point one.
Four point one.
And then I have something after that once we uh, I just want to make sure because I've always accounted that for like all of the positions.
Four point one?
Mm-hmm, you see right after our BOE um budget funded staff, we have grant. And it's like sixty-eight point five.
I think, I don't know.
And then the other one is like Ernie and Treehouse.
Yeah, enterprise.
Mm-hmm.
But does it say where they are or what, what category they're, they're in?
Sort of like certified teachers, it doesn't, and then paras and stuff. You see that?
See, it doesn't, the top, it defines it all. Up here, so it tells you if it's a para tutor, classroom aide, a security, community coordinators. Clerical custodial, so it's all listed up here, what they, what their jobs are. If they're from the grants.
I just, but that's comprehensive, right? Okay.
I see, you don't have to get that.
Okay, so then, um.
Well, I was kind of talking about like, the communication specialist, for instance, where is that here? It's just lumped in somewhere, so that, that's kind of what I was getting at is, you know, we have point five FTE communications. Assigned to this category. So, but like, and, and when you get into the individual things, um, you know, I mean, paras, tutors, aides and security are all kind of lumped together. That's a pretty difficult one to figure out.
And then would we get the security guards or paras? What are we gonna do with that information once we get it?
I'm gonna ask where it is in the grant section for you.
Actually, this is where Jen's idea, both inside and outside the budget process, that uh full operational flow chart looked great. I mean, it'd be very impressive, actually.
I actually have it.
Yeah.
You finished it?
No, just one more last one. Um, so what, I know this goes back to your very first question and I said I didn't have any. But as we're going through this now, what I would like to see is like the positions that have been converted from grant. To board, because this is the second time we've heard this throughout the process. One is the communication person and then the other ones were, um, I think they were IDEA, if I remember correctly. I have it in my notes on another piece of paper.
Forty-five in IDEA, paras.
So I, that is actually what is more.
Every year that way.
That is actually what is more important is like, because you converting it from grant to Board of Ed is actually what's increasing. Um, because it used to be funded somewhere else, right? Like non-board funding, so. Right, that's what's more important.
I, I just want to interject one thing. Since, such as the title grant, we can't, uh, or the IDA grant in particular, we cannot supplant the budget with those, with those positions. So once they're hired for those positions, um, if the position is eliminated, you can't move it into the budget because it's, it's against, it's against that grant. So you, you need to be careful who, what, when and where gets charged to specific grants.
I'm not saying going into the grant, I'm going like, say the grant expires this year.
It can move, yes, you can move that back in.
And that's what I feel like is happening in certain situations. And that is like what we need to try to figure out.
Okay, but we, I just want to caution everybody, we cannot move the other way with it. We can't use.
Yes, that would be, yes.
Okay.
But let's just say somebody, well, we went through this, thank God you weren't with us last year when we had to go through like um, our project process last year. But um, like the ARPESR grant, right? Like um, thank God, like we were able to remove all of those. I'm not, you know, as a commitment at the superintendent made that she would reduce it, all the hires against that. So she committed to that and she did that. But now, um, I'm just using that as an example because we might have other grants now that are expiring that we're not aware of. Just because it's not as forefront of a grant and grant expiration dates. So now, we're seeing creep of some positions going into the board. And that's just the piece that I feel like we're missing. Um, I don't think it's a lot, but this is like, I just noticed the second time we've heard it.
Well, we'll get those details. I know that we had to hire more EL. Teacher, pairs, tutors. Because of the needs.
Yes.
And the population growing.
Yeah.
So that was definitely something that had to happen this year and into next, so you do see a piece in that.
Yeah, so it's not that it's right or wrong, it's just creating transparency, right? Um, we're not trying to hide it, it's um, just so that we're all clear that it used to be funded one way and it's now funded another way. So similar to this, if Anne Marie hadn't mentioned it, we wouldn't have known. Because from last budget cycle, this communication person was, I feel bad for this person. Funded, unfunded, refunded, and then like half funded from grant and stuff. So this poor person's funding has gone every which way. So um, just need to understand now it looks like grant and Board of Ed. Which I know at one point, this board was against funding that. So for it to creep up and show on the board side is a little bit, um, you know, disconcerting at this point.
I think it was fully in the board side, but we were realized that this grant would accept this because of the family engagement piece.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, back to page five eighty-six, five eighty-seven.
Okay.
Can I just make a quick comment?
No, no, your comments are never split.
Um, well, I just wanted to, to, to add more color to, to what Jen was saying, yeah. My notes uh on the communication specialist position, it was hundred percent ARPESR. And then, and when the decision was made to uh eliminate all of the ARPESR positions, just, you know, as a matter of equity. Then at some point, the communication specialist was pulled back in. And you know, that was not necessarily an explicit board decision, if my memory serves correctly.
Well, I'll find out for you. I'll make sure that, I'll double check that.
There's one word.
Now I feel like I'm cutting people. The FTE, um, FTE counts on special ed teachers, just because we went back to the green. Um, they're substantially different, so sixty-five.
What pages are you on?
If I go back to the green section.
Yeah.
Special ed teacher says sixty-five. Um, but the FTE count on function twelve thirty says fifty-three.
So the FTE in the green for sped says how many?
Sixty-five.
And then on your sheet for sped, is that just, it's K through twelve?
Twelve thirty says fifty, um, yeah, on function twelve thirty is fifty-three, special ed teachers.
I'm wondering if this one includes social workers and other people.
All right.
So I'll find out.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'll find out.
I tried to stick to the pages. Um, Mike and then Matthew.
I, I'm, I'm just on five eighty-six and five eighty-seven. That's good. Um, but I was, I'm still trying to understand the FTE chart because it's, we're talking like there's a change, but. But the, the FTE chart just has the same numbers across the line, like one data manager, half communication specialist. Half uh grade six or twelve curriculum coordinator and, and one admin staff. And I checked the budget book, that's from last year, that's how it was. So it looked to me, in terms of funded from the BOE budget, it looks like it's the same in terms of, in terms of the chart. It's that, but, but you said maybe.
But in terms of the money.
But how did, that doesn't make.
One fourteen, so I gotta find out.
Yeah, yeah, so, so right, like, and then you go to five eighty-seven.
Yeah.
It's doubled, right? So we went to um, from one hundred and eleven thousand to two. It's doubled, right? So we went to um from one hundred and eleven thousand to two hundred and four thousand. So.
Because I was understanding that it was four different ones that were included. And maybe we just didn't account for the enrollment office people. In that at first.
Oh, and that is the one from fourteen only. So you so you think the. So so what you're saying is that the proposed budget in the chart should now say four instead of one, is that maybe?
Possibly. I'm just looking up to see if Lori got back to me on that. Hold on.
But so so then.
So I've got one fourteen includes an admin assistant. Uh, grants person. Uh, um, person who is um a registrar and then point five of the communication. The money part.
That's under one one four.
One one four. And I'm gonna list them here for me.
Clerical administration.
So three point five then F T?
Page eighty six is not correct. Communication special should be listed on the one and four.
Just put it out down here.
I I don't know if it's just that, because if you look at, so. Uh, that communication specialist is on. I guess line one oh five in the budget. And that's increased, but kind of requisite with an increasing salary. So there's no like adding or removing a position from one oh five. In terms of the budget numbers.
Yeah.
Same thing with the curriculum coordinators, that's kind of static and but then um it's the one fourteen that's.
Yeah, that needs to be resolved.
Yeah.
So I'll get the exact F T Es on that, but it is four.
But I kind of, so for, oh, because four people, because half the coordinator is in one fourteen and half is in. I guess one oh eight, is that what you're saying? Like, is it split that way? Because you said one admin assistant, one grants.
I'll find out where the other half is. I thought the other half was in grants, so I'll find out. But it definitely is an admin assistant, a grants person, a grants writer, and um a registrar. And then the communicate, part of the communication coordinator. That adds up to that two oh four.
And then so maybe only the registrar, uh would any of them been funded with grants this year? I don't, I'm missing that. Registrar seems like probably not.
Um, could have been grants were, I I have to find out.
Yeah. Okay, thanks.
So Susan will find out that's the correct answer to that.
Yes, when we were first talking about breaking these out in a lot of, with a lot more detail. My initial reaction was, I'm not sure what this will produce that will be useful, but the more I see us spending time on this. Page after page. I think it's important, and there's a second reason I think it's important to do this as rapidly as possible. Not being political, whether you like it or not, changes are coming. They may not all be favorable, and we are not assured that our funding will come in in the traditional way it's come. Particularly federal funding. That's why I think it's important to use this as a planning tool as well as an immediate budget tool. It means that if there is a differentiation in funding that we have next year, we can save ourselves a lot of angst next year. By being specific as soon as we can this year. So we have a document that we're, that's real from the get go. And it'll it'll save the board and administration a great deal of stress.
I agree. And I think even if we can clear up to make sure the F Ts are exactly what they are. The money relates to it and that we've got it in the narrative, what those positions are, so you would know. And we won't forget.
You know, we're gonna be responsible for some things over which we have no control. And and that's gonna be a heavy lift for everybody if it happens.
Well, to build on that idea, I'm just gonna throw another plug in for the idea of a second, another level of drop down.
That that's what I'm, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, and if we've had that baked into the into the template. Then it makes, we save ourselves a lot of these conversations, because we could see, okay, there's four, four positions.
Let's stay another couple hours.
She'll save a lot of them. It'll save a lot of that, I'll get back to you.
Glad you guys came up with the idea of benefit.
That was right.
I was a good. See, that's why we need you to help me with this. Okay.
Anything else?
I'll just keep giving you candy.
On page eighty six, eighty six.
I don't um, I don't believe so, um. But if there's any, I'm happy to entertain any questions from this page before I move to the next one.
I would say that I said to um, who talked you into taking such a a cuts for admin and. So she really did cut back. I think there are some funds in some other areas for travel um that I can share with her.
Well, you you'll see that that's gonna come up in on page five dash ninety one.
Okay.
Okay. Page.
Five ninety and five ninety one.
Do you wanna skip um?
Oh, no, I'm sorry, I didn't even see that. So.
Okay, so five eighty eight and five eighty nine.
Well, it's, yeah, it's um. The board several years ago asked to have funds here for a stipend and also some books and materials. Um, there's also some um professional learning in here. Um, sometimes the State Department will have. Different um programs and um. So we've really kept, um, we, this year we had eleven thousand six hundred, we kept it the same. For um the instructional improvement services, three twenty two for professional learning. There's no travel in there. Um, there's some professional nominal professional materials and books and that kind of thing. And then there's a stipend in there.
Yeah, I think uh. I think this is 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 um as important as ever. Um, due to uh, you know, keep in mind, because uh, you know, I think. A lot has been misconstrued about what D E I really means. And what I take it to mean, it is the efforts of filling in the blank spaces. That have been historically erased. Um, so you know, uh, and increasing awareness of how those structures occurred, how those things have happened and. How best to prevent those from happening again. So um, I think this is where the effort, I would love to um peruse some of the materials that are, you know, like. Uh, that are being shared.
Hmm.
Um, you know, to kind of validate my belief. But um, you know, my experience with D E I has been, has been that and from that approach is about filling in the missing spaces. Um, because I know for one, when I came through high school, I never learned about Tulsa. So. Um, it's important that, you know, all the history is shared.
Anyone else?
I have better schooling than you, apparently.
Yeah.
It depends on where you go in the school, where your catches are.
And I'm older, next to Andrew probably, I'm next, the next oldest, I think.
No, no, I think I'm older than you. I think I got you.
Well, attention to demotion.
It's the way you dress, the way you carry yourself.
All right, five ninety, five ninety one. This is Anne Louise.
Yes, back to me. Okay, so this this part is on a uh improvement of instruction. And when we're talking about this, we're talking about uh instructional materials. Uh, for our teachers and for our curriculum people. We're also talking about curriculum development, staff. Uh, staff development and training, specific training, for example, training for our um. M Y P teachers or teachers of advanced placement courses, a whole range of things, um as well as course reimbursement. So, you know, looking at this area, um, I wanna uh go over a couple of things. Um, number one, again, I'm gonna get on my ruler here because the print is very small. Um, we do have certified teachers in this particular um budget, section of the budget. And you can see here that there there is a, an increase of about um just over twelve thousand dollars.
Um. And then salaries and wages probably for the curriculum development.
Yep. Um, then in.
One certified teacher.
No, 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 it's for all of the teachers who do that curriculum work after, you know.
This is curriculum work.
Summer work?
Summer work, sometimes it's after school work, it's, yeah.
Yeah, that that work takes place generally whenever we can have teachers do it outside of the contracted hours. Um, a lot of times it happens during the summer, but um you'll see here, I wanna also highlight. Um, line three twenty one instructional services. So what falls under that are things like um. Our work with Mystic Aquarium or the Seaport Planetarium, um Project O, the Denison uh Nature Center. So trips that students take to those areas. Um, you can see here that there was a a decrease in this line item. Um, for this year, and I think that's, you know, our um, our team trying to be a little bit more cognizant of what they're doing. Sometimes that there's just really a shift of maybe we're doing one less trip to one area because we're placing um more money in another area. Um, three twenty two, you'll see that there's a, an increase of nine thousand dollars um this year. And that um, uh, the one thing that I think is a little bit different about um this book that I'm not as used to. Is that I'm used to seeing like three or four years at a time. So if you look this, it looks like a nine thousand dollar increase, which is large. Um, but if you were to look at a couple of years, and I I'm fortunate, I mean, I'm I'm new to the district. But um I do have a couple of years' history that I was able to look back at. And um the teaching and learning budget was cut, you know, significantly last year. And so um, I believe it was forty four thousand dollars a couple of years years ago. And so this was our effort to kind of bring it back a little bit closer to what it was.
And especially the actuals for twenty four, that was a tight year we were getting through, and we were tightening our belts everywhere. That's probably, that's an anomaly, and it was that low.
Um.
Can you tell me what exactly is in this line?
Yeah, so it's professional development. It covers our district-wide professional development days that happen in August. There are two days to start the school year, there's a day in November, and then there's a day in March. It also covers any individual training requests that come in from teachers, if they wanna go to professional uh learning, for example. Um, I just got some uh requests from teachers, they wanted to go to the Atomic Math Conference, which is a statewide conference to math teachers. So we had some uh, some requests come in for teachers that wanted to attend a training that Circus um. Circus, this uh Special Ed Resource Center, they have a training that they do every year, uh it's a diversity training. Um, so there's a variety of things that come up during the year that teachers wanna attend, so they put the uh the request through to my office. And then uh we, if we have the funds, we try to approve it so that they can go and learn things about their content. Or sometimes it's something that will help them enhance their teaching if they're at the elementary level. Again, it's a variety of different things.
And I have to say that the new plan for teacher um support and evaluation is directly tied to their professional learning. Goals, so those pro- professional learning goals, then we really need to support them. If there's, it could be a book that they wanna read, it could be um a webinar that they wanna attend. So we really wanna make sure that there's some personalized um professional learning based on their goals and their actual. Evaluation plan.
And I think, you know, Susan had made a comment about some line items that we had zeroed out on the other page. And one of the reasons for that, like uh travel to workshops and conventions, is because we wanted to redirect some money into this area. Again, in support of the new evaluation plan in which teachers could kind of create. Um, almost like a pathway to personalize their learning. Um, and then looking at some other line items, computer software, this came up the uh, I wanna say about a week or two ago. And um someone had asked, you know, what are some of the things that typically um fall under this line item? And I had, you know, contributed from home, and then Susan said, no, that's not where, you know, that uh those software uh line items. Um, are placed, but I can kind of talk to those, um, you know, if you had questions about it. Now, this is where my line items come up, so um I was speaking out of turn that day, but you know, I can talk about them now. If if you wanted, if you were interested. In this case, just some things typically that fall under that computer software or that we fund in the past. Um, Apex Learning, which is a software that allows our students that uh maybe have fallen behind. Um, to catch up and do some remediation. Um, that's, that software falls under there. Amplify, which is um, allows our students to take the DIBELS assessment and then our teachers to track the data. In fact, I was with a group of fourth grade teachers from C K today. Um, they were analyzing that student data. They were doing such a great job, I was so happy to be there with them. Um, that uh software falls, that platform falls uh in that line item. Dreambox, which is one of our math platforms, that falls there. Ed Club, um, that's something that's new for me. I I'm not as familiar with that, but from when I understand in my notes. Great, students in grades two and three use that. Um, Haggerty, which is uh about phonemic awareness, that falls under that. Lexia Power Up, I know many of our students um that have reading challenges use that software. Uh, Literacy Without Tears, our youngest students use that uh software. Um, Mystery Science falls in this um, in this line item. Pebble Go and World Book, which I believe are used by our library and media specialists. Um, that falls in in that line item as well. And then in terms of professional materials, that's line five ninety. This is where um things typically, like um when teachers request books or materials. Um, that's where those line items go. For example, I've been working with the elementary math specialists. And we did a book study together recently on building thinking classrooms. Uh, Susan and I have been facilitating that. And so uh because we were facilitating that book study together, we purchased the books for those teachers, and so we use that line item for that.
And that's.
Is that why you have a big increase?
Uh, I wouldn't think that it's uh, I would, we didn't, we didn't think it's for just those those books, no. They're they're soft cover.
But they have talked about expanding that, and that's a math initiative, and that's really happening. I think we've talked about it. Little school, seventh grade, it really adopted.
Yes.
As a instructional model, and they saw wonderful results. So we wanna see more wonderful results in mathematics.
Yes, I all.
More problem solving and thinking through and understanding properties of mathematics.
Yeah, we definitely see.
Just uh, so for the software, is there a way to get a a itemized breakout of like what's anticipated to be spent on each of those programs?
Yeah, so I have um what's being spent now, we still have to go ahead and get the quotes for next year. And sometimes that doesn't come out until like, you know, like a little bit later in the spring. But um I can give you what's, what we're paying now, if that's helpful.
That would be helpful, yeah. Just get a sense of proportion.
Yeah, sure.
Thank you.
There's a lot that was listed here.
Sure.
Um, for different grades and stuff. Um, is, and I know you're new, as you reevaluate, is there an opportunity to pick one? That will expand all grades and potentially reduce training costs and prove. Because there's a continuity for the kids. So that's my question, you don't need to answer it now. We could do it at like a C O W and like your vision for, but it was just like a lot.
We do, Jen, every year is we do a usage report, we analyze the usage of these softwares, and we also look at. The cost and the increased cost because they've all estimated in cost, I have to say. Um, and then we've done surveys before on software to see what teachers are really, you know. And administrators really see as the best thing for the body. So we we do that each year.
So when do you do it? At the end of the year?
Um, usually in the spring.
That we can expect to see that.
Yeah, um, Andrea, I was just gonna um mention that. There is um, there is a computer software survey, um, and actually there's a, I think there's something on a referral sheet to talk about it at some point.
Now it's gonna really trigger me to get it.
Yeah, um, well, we have last year's, um, so I don't know if you've had a chance to look over that, I'm sure you're probably a little buried. But there was some, um, you know, there was a lot of information, so I would, I would say just maybe take a look at that and.
Yeah.
You know, to to better allocate. Remember Lexia? Um, we cut way back on.
Yes.
Um. And um, and I think that, is there a new version of Lexia out now? They're waiting for a new version, and that's maybe why we.
You know, I'd have. Amplify does a lot of that removal work based on the data from the DIBELS. So Amplify is the software that does that now, and it aligns directly to what the students performing, and it tells the teacher what they need to do.
Yeah, which is why I know that they cut way back on the Lexia licenses. Uh, I know that that product is very expensive. I know that that product is very expensive. And so from what I understand, that's why they made that cut.
Now stated.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, from a, from a side, my wife teaches first grade, and she thinks Lexi is great. So, and I actually summarized a lot of the comments, which I'll, last year, which I'll, I'll send to you just for whatever that's worth.
Yeah, sure.
She's waiting with bait.
Yeah.
Waiting to rest. Those comments. I have to go, Matt, I think, Mike.
Yeah, I was just wondering for the computer software, thank you for giving the list. I was hung up for a bit, why? Yeah, it's, it's improvement of instruction, but then this is, this is like, oh, this we've had for a while, and that's what the students are using. But it's quite clear, if you look at the elementary, like function code, there's not much in there for, for computing software. It must, it must be here, right? And then because it bridges different grade levels too often. So, so thank you for explaining that. But there's quite a large increase, and it's not a recovery from past year cuts. So it's up like thirty percent, that forty thousand dollars.
What line is?
Uh, just a line, was it six twelve? Yeah, so it's up forty thousand. And then I guess it just continues to grow if I look back at the other budget book. But I'm wondering what's driving that, because it's a big increase.
Yeah, I, I mean, I can only, I can speak in generalities, not having the total history, obviously just being here in a couple of months. But I can say, in my experience in working in a role like this, once COVID happened and a lot of districts started using more platforms, and even if they weren't using more platforms, these, these, these companies, the prices just skyrocketed. So even if you were using a product for quite a long time, and you had been, your district that were loyal to them and had been using it, you know, and maybe even came in on the ground floor, it didn't matter anymore. Those companies just, I mean, the, the prices just soared. And so I think that this is, you know, the increase is very typical of, of what you would see. Every company just completely, I mean, even a, a, and this is an instructional software, something like as simple as a Zoom, you know, like a platform like that where you're just holding meetings. Many districts had to move away from Zoom or even like Google, Google for educators because they just couldn't afford to support having teachers or, or the district use them. They, they just, the price just skyrocketed.
And they, they had this little technique during COVID, they gave it to you for free for a year or two. Everybody got, liked it, and then you had to pay fifty thousand dollars for the next year.
Just to attest to what Maria, Anne Marie was saying, I dropped Zoom at my last, in my last position.
Yeah, we're ready to drop Zoom too, and just do teams, maybe just for the board do Zoom.
So we, we're spending four hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars on improvement on instruction. How do you evaluate that what we're spending is improving instruction?
Yeah, well, that's something that I'm going to have to really look at. It's, you know, I am at the luxury right now of, of using the excuse, well, I'm new here, and I'm going to keep using that. Or until I, until, until I can't, I know that I'm going to have to start. That excuse is going to wear thin about June thirtieth, and then you can ask me those questions, and I'm going to have to answer them in earnest. And, and you should ask, ask me all of those questions. Right now, I'm still catching up to speed, and, and I'm learning what all of these things are, to be honest with you. But come talk to me around July one. I, I still won't even be in, in year one at that point, but I think at that point. I think at that point, some, some of those questions will be a little bit more fair.
I think, Anne, did you have some?
Oh, yeah, just one quick clarification. In the list, I think you said Lexia, did you say Lexia Power Up?
Yeah.
Yes, I believe so.
Okay, so do we still have some Lexia?
We do have some, some, some licenses, yes.
Okay.
That students are using.
For middle school, high school, I believe.
You know, I don't know.
And one thing.
I'm so new, I'm so new here.
One, one suggestion for tracking outcomes of improved instruction, I think, is the, are the surveys. So like, you know, looking at the, the, the raw responses and also looking at individual progressions. And, you know, in, in the, I guess, in the executive areas where like you can actually, you know, track individual students by name and correlate that with their comments and see if, you know, they are individually progressing towards mastery. And they are resonating with the, whatever software they may be using.
Oh, absolutely.
Instructional aids you may have. That would be one way to try to capture that. And then maybe try to put that into a report that you could share with the board and the public in a way that respects everyone's privacy.
Yeah. So obviously, we're looking all the time at student performance, and that's like the, one of the most basic things that we do as educators. But there are a lot of things, obviously, that I think go into looking at progress. And so, you know, that, I think, that's, that's really what I'm trying to get my head around right now is if you're going to look at just software or just some of the other programs, the curriculum. I mean, there are, you, you have to look at a whole lot of things. It's, it's got to be a big, it's got to be a big picture. Surveys may be one piece of that. The student performance is another piece. Surveys are another piece. So to me, it should be pretty well-rounded.
Great, thank you.
Yeah. I'd say so.
Probably not.
Thank you. To two things. This business of costs. At the legislators' breakfast, at the end of the legislators' breakfast, Susan was chatting with the superintendent of, or either board chair or superintendent of Ledyard, if I recall correctly. And I asked them, I said, we, some needs we have in common. Is it possible we could look with, with you, neighboring districts, at what we could order in common to be able to be in a stronger position to negotiate prices? I don't see that we're going to be able to negotiate on Lexi or Ed Club or Hegarty as a single district. But if we can identify, if CAPE can help us identify other districts that are also using Hegarty, just for an example, and we find we have nine districts, the prospect of losing nine customers can make them a lot more flexible in negotiating a bulk purchase. So I would, I don't know how to go about the process, but give some thought to, to this as a strategy that we have things in common with districts. They may be a different set of districts for different, or different software packages. But CAPE or CAP seems to be the ideal place to capture the data of, here are thirty different platforms that are in use in Connecticut, which does your district use? And then we can know if we can focus with, with, by platform for platform with such districts.
And our RUSTS have done that in the past, so I can talk to learn. Kate Erickson is really fabulous about pulling us together for resources and trying to get better deals for us. So I, I will absolutely bring that up. But there could be a survey done even through CAPS.
I, I think so. Anyway, I leave the operations to you, but if the board is, happens to be in agreement, that's a strategic way to look about cutting some costs. And I figure every twenty thousand dollars we can cut, or twenty-five thousand that we cut, means we can allocate that money to tutors or some other function where we really need to, to do it. That's the first thing. The second thing is sweets. My Google, my G, my Google platform offers a variety of, of programs. I can buy the programs individually, or I can buy a suite of programs. Is that something, I'm, I'm displaying my ignorance yet again, is that something that is out there? Or is that something we could look at?
Yes, depending on, you know, what the program or the platform is, sometimes they do offer, like, like, for example, if it's a suite, or sometimes they say, if you buy three years or five years, commit to three or five years, you know, we will give you a discounted rate. But sometimes you don't want to, depending on what the program or the platform is, sometimes you don't want to commit to three or five years. Like, I'll give you an example. Maybe I shouldn't call out the, a platform by name, but like during. Yeah, during COVID, there was a platform that I was using in my former district, or that the teachers were using. And I just knew that once COVID was over, they weren't going to use it anymore. I could just tell. It was, it had a lot of bells and whistles, and it was a great program for blended learning. But I just knew when we would, when we returned in person, there were only going to be probably a handful of teachers that continued to use it. And sure enough, when we came back to in-person learning, I checked the user report like monthly, and it, the users just kept decreasing and decreasing and decreasing and decreasing. And then at some point, when it came time to renew, I just said to this company, thank you, but we will not be renewing. No, thank you. Other districts went ahead and invested for three or five years. I only did it for that year, the twenty twenty dash twenty twenty-one year. And I'm really glad that we didn't, even though we kind of lost out on a multi-year deal. I'm really glad that we didn't do that multi-year investment because teachers did, as I expected, they just stopped using it. And so you have to be careful when you make a commitment like that. Now, a suite, I probably is a little bit different, but there's always things, just like anything in, in, in life, I think, when they package it in a certain way, there's always things that you probably, in that suite, that you probably don't want or you, or need. And that's why it's in there. If that makes sense.
That's why we're glad you're here.
Yeah, I don't know about that, but I'll try my best.
Any other questions, Mike? Did you have one?
Oh, it's just a comment. I think it's been a very fruitful discussion, and just in the budget narrative box, just add in something about computer software for, you know, supporting student learning or, or aiding instruction, something like that.
You can do that.
Jen?
Um, in the graduate credit course, two, two, four, is that CE credits? Or are we paying for like masters and PhDs?
You're paying by the contract, and it's the first come, first served, I think, but they are able to get a certain percentage off their course credits.
It could be masters.
It could be masters.
Masters, okay.
Masters.
In our contracts, do we have like them stay X amount of years after?
I have to look at that.
Okay.
I remember seeing that in a contract.
I don't remember.
I know with our teacher in residence, they.
I doubt it's there.
Supposedly a day after.
You doubt it, Sarah, okay.
So. Okay. I'll look.
Okay. They'll say.
Thank you.
Actually might be a compromise of this. We'd have to look. It's like all, you have to look.
I'm going, I'm going to bring you back. I'm going to try to do this in a, in a quicker way so that we, you can really chew on stuff that you want to talk about, but you can kind of breeze through the things that you don't. So if you go back to five fifty-six and five fifty-seven, that's enrichment, and it's, it started out as enrichment K five.
Let us take them. These people owe many more time.
Especially them.
So this enrichment function we put in, probably in the beginning when I first got here, so it's been at least eleven years or so. And it was really for K five. But we've expanded it K eight, and those are the after-school activities that we have. They are really related to STEM focus or literacy focus or arts focus at the elementary and even at the middle school, so they're not the sports-related things. Although there are some kind of PE activities, sometimes there are some sports for the elementary because they don't have intramurals or sports. So that's really the most of the, the majority of the money is in salaries, and it's per contract. So even stipends for after-school activities, teachers are paid a certain stipend per their contract.
Well, what kind of enrichment programs do we offer?
So we have all kinds of robotics at the elementary, in the middle school, there's robotics competitions.
Every, every elementary school has robotics.
They have probably some kind of STEM robotics. Some have done some drones, middle school teachers have done drones. And some of the materials we get for free because we're able to get grants for them. They have math clubs, and they have drama, you know. They have music, extra music or musicals that they put together. Really, a lot of them too, based on their theme, it kind of correlates with that as well. But you even, like a math club could be like a math help, but when you call it math club and you have some games in there, kids really want to come after school. So, but, you know, I can get you a list from the schools to be more exact on what's happening this year. So I'd happy to get you a list, but those are the kinds of things that they do.
Any questions on this two pages?
No, 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 I was raising my hand.
Yeah, you would add that list to the FAQs?
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yes, I was just thinking that with the budget narratives, you might put enrichment programs include A, B, C, D, E. That gives some real color to it. And I was going to ask a question of whether there was any grant participation. You've already answered that, but perhaps a line that said, these are supported not only by taxpayers, but on a participatory basis by six grantors, three grantors with a total of Y dollars contributed, so that, that their taxpayers can see that.
This one is definitely from the operation budget.
Oh, I thought I heard that there were some grants involved in some.
Not for this.
Okay.
But we do have grants that do the Twenty First Century program. I think at the middle school, we went for it at the high school, but we didn't get it this year, but we're applying next year. So we have had other grants that have contributed for after-school enrichment, but they're paid for in the grants.
Okay.
Jen?
More of a comment than a question, right? So I know at least Hartford School District, because I used to sit on the board of the United Way. United Way, we used to fund agencies that did after-school activity, basically to keep kids off the streets, right? And then offer enrichment, offer food, like for students. Is, have you explored partnering with other agencies in the southeast region? Because I'm not as familiar, or even just contacting the United Way to see what partner agencies they fund that support children? Because that's one of their main missions. I'm not pushing.
No, United Way is the one that our school district contributes to. And I actually, every year when I contribute, I put grant in public schools, but that's a good question. How do I get that money?
I mean. Right, I don't, I, we support East Hartford too. We would come in and we would distribute. I mean, the funding was a lot, and I mean, it was very enriching.
Been helpful with the food pantries in the schools.
So, yeah, yeah, like I said, I'm not pushing United Way just because I love United Way, but.
Well, we all, we are really supporters of United Way here. It's a good suggestion.
Done, Jen?
Yes.
Yeah, just, I just saw that that one twenty-seven other student activity is up by eighteen thousand, so like forty-eight percent or forty-nine percent. Are there additional enrichment programs that are going to start up for them?
Yes, we've actually expanded it all the way through middle school, though in the past, we typically did K through five. And now we're also including the middle school.
Okay.
You might want to put that. Anything else?
Just to clarify, that's because last year it went K through five, right? This is the first year it's K through eight.
Yeah, they had another grant-funded program, and they still do, but they felt like they had other things. They've even done some homework help and some math. Well, they had the math tutoring program too, so. But I can get more details on that. I'll find out from Peter what those, look like those classes.
Hey.
You see? This seems to be an anomaly. We've increased our total staff salary and wages by forty-eight percent, and our employee benefits are down thirty-three percent.
Yeah, we're going to fix that. We're going to put all the benefits in one place.
That's right. I forgot. Thank you. Thank you, thank you. I forgot. CPU is not working.
Okay, we're going to turn the page to remedial. Five fifty-eight and five fifty-nine.
In one section.
Five fifty-eight and five fifty-nine.
And these are support remedial programs in services and reading and mathematics instruction. You've heard me talk about the reading and math coaches or specialists we have in each of the schools. And then we also have interventionists in reading. We used to have a lot more. We used to have a lot more tutors in math and you know, hopefully if we, this DODIA math grant comes to fruition, we'll be able to add some more of our math tutors back. But you can see the numbers basically for, there's no change in, in FTEs here. There, we have certified teachers in each of the schools who are providing these services. There are a couple extra at Mystic River and Thames River because of the size. And they really are, there's two specialists in each of the schools at Mystic River in math. And only one in literacy, but then there's also interventionist in literacy. So it adds up to six or 6.6, it looks like at Mystic River. I think that point six was the literacy teacher, li- literacy intervention and interventionist who specifically Wilson trained and providing some extra Wilson teaching for elementary at Mystic River.
So we're, we're spending, it looks like $3 million, $3.2 million on remedial education instruction. How do you evaluate that? What, what you're spending your money on is going to the right schools.
Well, I, I think it's like Anne Marie said, you're looking at the data all the time and you're looking at.
We looked at it and it wasn't looking too good.
No, I know. But the coaches need to be coaching in the classroom, helping to support the teachers. But they also in math, they have to do both. They have to, you have one person. You got a school of 500, oh, well, the schools of 500 plus, they've got two math people. That's it. To take care of that, all of the kids who have needs.
So you're saying you don't have enough?
Not math.
So do you think about maybe in the area that's doing well, reducing those, that personnel, putting them over to the math?
The problem is you've got to be, the literacy people have a certain certification to do literacy. The, the specialists have even a higher level of certification to do their work. And then the interventionists have another certification. So, you know, but we can be looking at that and you know, that's one of the reasons we're trying to support the math work in this next DODIA.
Because we're looking at student achievement, this is the pages that should be helping us with student achievement. So if the money on this page isn't going to where it's supposed to, to where we need it the most. So I don't know how you look at all that for.
Um, yeah, I was just going to put another, you know, another, this would be another instance where the dropdown, the extra dropdown would be advantageous because with the certified teachers, you'd be able to list out how many literacy interventionists you have, how many other specialists you have, you know, by title and get a better sense of how that's proportioned out.
So at Charles Barnham, where you have four, you have one math specialist, one literacy specialist, and then the other two are literacy interventionist. And that's for all the fours. That's what they have. And I can write that in the, I can actually write that in the narrative.
Yeah.
And the only difference is with the Mystic River and the Thames River, they have two math specialists at each of their schools. One literacy specialist and the rest are interventionist.
Maybe can you describe what interventionist is?
Interventionist versus the, I think they call them coaches and math coaches.
Yeah, so it's great to see negative numbers, but in my opinion, this is not the place where we should see negative numbers. Given, you know, our scores. And when you think about something like reading intervention, just because when my kids were that age, I felt like I was, you know, involved in that a lot. At least, you know, paying attention to what was going on. If you have, you know, we say there's four that do math and reading. So maybe that's two and a half that do reading or something like that. Times, I mean, remember what those numbers were, the amount of kids that are under grade level, like 45% are under grade level. And when you take two and a half teachers and try and put them into 200 kids or something like that, there is not enough support in my opinion for reading and math. And I think, you know, as we've talked about that sport, doing it at a really early level, so kindergarten, first, second, picking kids up early. So it, you know, who knows what will happen, but I, I would like to personally know if there is, if there is a place to add staff. It seems to me that we could get the most bang for the buck in this category. So I would like to know where from the administration, if we were to add staff, where would it be? What would, what would be an amount?
Okay.
This, this just to me seems like it's been, you know,
Yeah, the only
historically under appreciated.
The negative, I think, is because what has happened with our, some of our specialists and even interventionists is there've been retirement at top step and then bringing on teachers who are, you know, kind of mid-step teachers to replace them. But we have had quite a few, we've had some transitionings in that, in these roles.
But we're losing one at Sitch and I realize that, you know, we adopted two and only and if, and only have one this year. But last year when we were talking about, you know, the kids that really need that phonics, phonemic awareness and stuff in that ju- just never got that instruction and ended up, you know, kind of getting pushed through the system without the skills that they really needed. And we had talked about how are we going to do intervention and catch those kids that we know that we missed early on? And then I see that we have one less in Fitch. You know, it just makes me question that. So I see that the decrease in salary, but we also have a decrease of a, of a full-time, you know, staff member.
That's true.
So, so like I said, I, I, I would, I would appreciate just some ideas if we were to add staff in here, where it might be the best bang for the mo- buck and you know, what the cost of that.
Thank you, Adrian. I appreciate that.
I'd like to build on what Adrian said. It appears, I mean, we won't know until the results come out, but it appears from what we've heard that the math, high-density tutoring and math seems to be working pretty well. So the question in my mind is, is that approach transferable to ELA and science? I, I, I have no idea if it's transferable or not, but I would love to see if, if we do want to support subject matter mastery at an early age to avoid having to pay remediation for six or eight years thereafter, that we could at least try some high-density tutoring in ELA and science. One strategy might be to have a given teacher at the same grade level. We're in one class, we have high dead, high density tutoring in the other class, we don't. And see what the grade scores are at the end of the year and then, and do the same in science. And we, we, we can, there's a little bit of a gamble because we're not guaranteed it'll work, but it's a kind of a scientific approach and see where the data leads us. We are data-driven.
We saw how high-dose tutoring at the middle school and high school did work and they're still using those materials because some of the tutoring went away. But all the materials that were being used and now our teachers and specialists are using some of those.
But that's in math, right?
That's in math.
Well, that's what I, what I'm saying. I'm not trying to say stop math. I'm saying that we have three core areas and I, it would be a pity if we focused on one when we need to be focusing on all. We don't have the funds to go all in. So let's try a small-scale pilot project and see with the same teacher, the same grade level, the same materials, one with, one without in different classrooms and see what it gives us. Does that make any sense to, to you? And how much would it cost us for a high-density tutor?
So you're going to do high dosage tutoring and science?
And ELA.
And ELA.
I, I don't, I can't, I'm not arguing that it's definitely going to work, but I think if we have an experiment in, in one class in each of two schoo- two classes in each of two schools, one with, one without in each of ELA and, and science, I don't know that we need to a, add a lot of staff to do that.
I am going to need one to be.
I, I don't think it's a bad idea to sometimes pilot things. And I know that's what a part of what this past year was about, was piloting the, the high tutoring, high-doçage tutoring in math. And there's been a lot of studies out in terms of the different formats for the way in which math is being delivered in the high-dose tutoring model. Some people did high-dose tutoring for students online. Some people did it in person, not here in Connecticut, but there, there's been a, a bunch of different studies that have been done in Chicago, for example, versus, and I'd like to see if Connecticut actually does a study, the State Department of Connecticut, with the work that was being done here. But I think one of the things that people found as barriers, because I saw it here and then I also saw it in my former district, we were one of the districts, uh, my former district was one of the form, uh, districts that was awarded that grant as well, is that logistically, it was hard to actually identify, to, find tutors. People don't want these jobs. And so you not only have to find tutors that, people that want that work and then in mathematics especially, you have to find people that can provide that level of instruction, especially at the middle and high school level. People that are qualified to deliver that level of, that have that knowledge and an ability to then deliver that level of instruction to kids.
I was not clear. I was thinking more in terms of an elementary level.
Okay.
To try to avoid the necessity for a lot of remediation later.
Yeah, yeah, but it is hard now for whatever reason. I mean, these jobs were not difficult to fill in the past and they're very, very hard to fill. And I'm sure that Susan can kind of fill in the statistics more than I can. But we have these, we have openings everywhere in terms of trying to fill tutor jobs, para jobs. You know, we want to, I think, to provide support to our students and cannot fill some of those positions.
So the, the question is, i- if we, if we don't try something different.
I agree.
We're not going to get results that are different from the past.
I totally agree. I totally agree with that. I, I.
I don't want to go all in because that would be a gamble. That would be irresponsible.
Yeah. But I think that there are other things that we can try and I don't think your idea is a bad one. I think it's actually a, a good idea, especially in light of the fact that we know that the middle school has had some success in this area. But we need to think about logistically what we can do in light of this, the challenges related to hiring and staffing.
Would you guys be able to give it, put on your thinking caps?
For sure.
A little time together and get back to us in a couple of weeks?
One of the things that came out of the high-dose tutoring was we worked with a smart start group. And the tutors that they provided were outstanding. And I heard it from teachers, I heard it from kids. So that was a great organization. I think it costs a little more typically, but they really provided training for these people and they came in and they.
Yeah, I attended their presentation. It was really very strong.
So that's something I can look into.
I, you, you said science. I myself would rather, for myself, for myself, would rather focus on math and reading. Because I find if you could read, you'd do all right on science, because science is a lot of reading.
Well, if all we.
I don't want to, I, for me, I wouldn't have both to spread ourselves thin. Just, let's focus on two areas then. That's just me speaking.
I'm fine with that. If, if we're, if we're able to locate enough tutors to do both, fine. If we're not, absolutely.
Jen and then Mike.
Okay, so I'm always going to be the person out in left field, right? To me, like, yes, it's good that we have this remedial training, but the goal is to get it right the first time, to fix what is wrong so that we can decrease the need for this remedial. Because now we're spending on education twice for the same thing. So as far as I'm concerned, if the issue is math, maybe in the middle school, we invest in like two or three more teachers in math, make the classes smaller in math, maybe in sixth grade so that we can make sure that foundational, from a foundation perspective, that they're going to be fine. And then, then it's up to them to progress in that seventh and eighth grade, whether they're going to go to the algebra track or just like regular math track, whatever it may be. But try to fix it at the core and not invest more in reading remediation. So if, if math is wrong and we know it's wrong and the cause of it is because our foundation in fifth, sixth grade is not strong to lead them up to 12th grade. Let's fix it in sixth grade. If it's not, I'm not the math person. Susan, you claim to be the math person, right?
I don't claim.
So if it's, you claim, so if it needs to be.
Better take that back. The math person.
Math person. So if it's fifth grade.
I like math.
Yeah, I love math too. But I, but if it's fifth grade, let's invest in fifth grade, wherever you guys think. Let's invest there. Instead of adding more in this section, invest. And we may not see it the first year, but in two years or three years, we will probably see it because now we're focusing in on it. So that's just my view. And like I said, I'm always thinking a little bit different.
I've always said, if you get the core right, you don't need as much more. So I agree with you and I think earlier on.
Now she's a rapper.
I'm just saying. And, and so we are doing some things in literacy that are looking really good. They've been a heavy lift. They've been hard because it's new.
Yes.
And we're looking the same thing with some of these building, taking classrooms and looking at our materials and things will be coming to curriculum. But I do believe you have to get that, but there's going to always be kids who need a little more time, need a little different approach.
Agreed.
So we're going to have either remedial or special education to provide so that kids can, but I do believe if we lay the foundation the best way we can, you're going to have more kids succeed.
Yeah, and like our scores will.
So I'm not, I agree with you. I said, if the core right, you don't need as much.
Exactly.
Jen's thinking it's better, instead of three million, maybe even we concentrate on the core.
The core.
This down to.
In time. I'm not saying we hold this, right? I'm not saying decrease this. You hold this, you invest in the core. And as we're seeing the core improve, this should eventually go down. I'm not saying it goes away. I'm saying it goes down.
Michael?
Yeah, I was just wondering.
Yes.
Yeah, I was just wondering two things. Anne Marie mentioned the, um, the challenges of hiring tutors. I was wondering if, um, is it, would it be easier to hire a certified teacher, do you think, in remedial education or is that also challenging? Or as challenging?
I, I would say it's not as challenging, but I, I certainly defer to what the superintendent thinks in this. I, I, I think the cert, uh, finding certified people. I think there are more people that are, that are out there.
Especially if they have a certification in literacy. I ran a Sacred Heart several cohorts for a decade. We're trying to get certification for math teachers and the state never moved to that, but I've always believed you need to have certified specialists. So our specialists in mathematics, they get a lot of super training. You know, we provide a lot of training and coaching and, and that. But I ran a six-year degree program in that for, you know, 10 years. So I do know that that can help, but the state needs to start and put their, you know, certification team on that because I think it's still very important to get a certification in the mathematics, if you're going to be a specialist or coach.
Yeah, I agree with that for sure. And then my other question is at, at the high school level and maybe the middle school level, does that, do the remedial offerings, does that include Apex? Like administering Apex courses or is that something separate?
That's separate.
Okay.
Yeah, I just wanted to, um, build on, on a little bit of what Jen and Mike were talking about and um, I, and, and what you said, um, and Anne Marie as well. I mean, it does sound like, and intuitively, my own sense of it is that it would be easier to find uh, full-time teachers than to find, you know, highly targeted specialists or support. Only because it is like a full-time job and has a very regular schedule as opposed to specialists, you can end up, you know, being in a very erratic situation, you know, depending on like how you're assigned and how you're shuffled around.
Are you talking about the certified teaching position?
I'm, I'm just saying in general, like what are, what are we going to invest in long-term to try to help improve overall achievement? And I agree with Bev. You know, my experience, yeah, if you focus on reading and math first and foremost, that provides a foundation for everything else. And so, you know, I, I, I'm also a firm believer that smaller class sizes at, at lower level, lower grades are, that's where you want to put the word. are, that's where you want to put the work in. That allows like the teacher to manage the classroom behaviors better. It allows the teacher to provide a little bit more individuated instruction, a little more differentiation. So it just allows a lot more flexibility. So, you know, moving forward, I mean, this is not necessarily a discussion for this here and now budget, but I think, you know, philosophically, that's an approach I'd like to advocate for, is that we look at decreasing class size in lower grades and focusing on, on building the fundamentals, you know, organically early on, and hopefully that would decrease the need later on.
You could decrease the class size or put a para educator in those lower grades. I don't know which kind of sign more of them.
Yeah, well, that's another one. Those are positions that's hard to, yeah, because it's a thankless position, you know, and you know, but a teacher, a teacher is an identity, and, and so if you just decrease the class size, class load, it increases the teacher's ability to teach and not just manage.
That means I need more classrooms in those schools.
Yes, it does. And we need to talk about facilities, you know? But again, that's, that, that's a macro level.
Mary Morrison.
Yeah. You know, I can look at the $3.2 million, if you know, from one of two positions. One, oh my God, $3.2 million, that's a lot of money. Or I can say, well, the grand scheme of things, it was that much money. I'm gonna go with the my first feeling, which is, that's a heck of a lot of money. And we see a figure like this every year in the budget. You know, education is ideally in a collaboration between our, our staff, the kids themselves, more, more responsibilities as they get older especially, and hopefully they wake up. And, and the families behind them. The school can't do it all itself. The kids can't do it all themselves. The parents can't do it all themselves. That's why they send them here. Some homeschool, God bless, but most people don't have the, the time or the training and inclination. So this is, I don't know, an indication of something wrong. You're always going to have that core group of kids who just don't, they're not going to get K through 12 somewhere along the way. It's not for them yet. They're late bloomers, or they're just, they're not going to bloom as widely or as colorfully as the other kids. Not everybody, as Garrison Killer says, is above average. Some kids possess, you know, better talent. It's, it's either an indication that we've got half the kids, roughly speaking, you know, at or below, you know, they're either totally not meeting expectations, or they're on their way to meeting expectations, they're in the yellow zone, but, but they're below that, below that halfway mark that we have set up. Is either somebody's doing something wrong, or mass education, having 10, 20, 30 kids in a class, God forbid, is not the way to go. But I don't know what the solution is. You can't have Plato's Grove that will wander around the, you know, the olive trees for a while, while one person talks to five people. You know, who, who wouldn't mind instruction like that? But there's gotta be some way, again, going back to, oh my God, this is a big number. There's gotta be some way to keep this from being a perennial thing. And yeah, maybe, maybe we should focus on, in fact, I think we should focus on the earlier grades. You know, there's a point beyond which if they haven't figured out how to read properly, they're, I'm not gonna use them, we're doomed, but they're gonna have a much steeper hill to climb. And a lot of these kids also check out. They're frustrated in school because, 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 because they have to go back several grades. They may not even remember how they were. You know, they were not educated properly because they didn't do their work, family didn't do work, teacher didn't do work, whatever. It's just a really, really disappointing number, and I just don't want to see this anymore, but I will. In whatever capacity, as, as a perennial figure. It just, you know, we've got a town of, what, 40,000 people? We got what, 4,000 people and 4,000 kids in the school system? It's millions of dollars just for remediation. You know, obviously today the kids need it. But you know, what about tomorrow? How do we fix it so that most kids don't need this? I can't believe that half our kids need remediation. That's, that's what's seen to show.
Well, that's not, this isn't for, yeah, I mean, there's special educators also that are working with students who are
Yeah, so I mean, if this represents like core group of, whatever that core is, kids who are just going to need extra help, no matter what mommy and daddy do, no matter what they do, and no matter what the average teacher does, they're just gonna need more, just gonna need more, more attention, and they should be attended to. I, I don't know, I don't know what, you know, what this is.
I don't think though it's escalated. I mean, we had actually, it's gone down from one year to the next, but
Yeah, but our student population's also gone down.
Yeah.
But it is food for thought. Where do we want to go with this remediation? And I, I'm a believer too in concentrating on the elementary schools and not so much in the high school. I mean, I had a student, she was 16, she couldn't multiply. So you're 16, you can't multiply, you know, after adding and subtracting, what are you gonna do? Division is multiplication. So I had to teach her how to multiply before I can go any further in math. I thought, go back to your screw district and sue their butts. You go, they failed you. I mean, you're 16, you can multiply. There was nothing wrong with that. She learned to multiply and then she moved on from math.
And it's frustrating for the kids when they don't know how to do these things, you know?
So we really gotta catch them when they're younger and make sure they're
Do you guys have any questions for Ray? I'm saying good night to him. He's had a long day.
Oh.
So you have anything else for Ray?
Am I alone, or is there not an?
Is it your turn to speak?
I thought you were gonna
Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.
Night.
There seems to be an argument for what Bev wants, because as far as I'm able to observe, there's an inverse relationship between motivation and age. When the kids come in and young, in kindergarten, first, second grade, they are just begging to be taught. They're begging for as much information as they can get. By the time they're in fifth grade and puberty begins to set, my goodness, it's a whole different thing.
I don't know. I had pipe fitters in fifth grade. CBS is doing a huge thing with Grasso and with us on the boat program for me, B, and I've never seen kids so excited in my life.
Well, that's because
So I'm telling you, I see it, I see it all over, but it's gotta be, you gotta be engaged, you know?
They're doing stuff.
Doing stuff.
We have to make education fun again.
Yeah, but I saw it. It's gonna be on television too. Laura O'Donnell, next week, I'll let you know.
And we gotta have one reason why I really like Amber Ray. Because she talked about high expectations.
That's right, she does.
And
I was gonna say, Beth, that's because some people have never been in my English class. And I, I obviously worked with, you know, high school students, and I always like to think that my class was the most fun class of, of all, of their entire day, so. But you have to think that way, because otherwise, if you don't, then, then your students aren't very motivated.
And you'll burn out.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. And now I teach college students, and I, I like to think that, when, well, I don't currently, but when I did in the fall, I'd like to think that my class was the highlight of their day.
So anything else, someone's a bit aging?
All right, not, not to go too far into what we've already talked about, but, but yeah, we, we know, we, like, we know that, you know, we heard from that conference, and what was the name that spoke at the reading conference from literacy?
RG Gillis.
RG Gillis said, you know, like, just to go reading, if we identify those kids with dyslexia at four or five, they won't need to be in special ed for the rest of their, you know, if we, if we deal with it that young, we won't need to have kids in high school with special ed, you know, and take up those resources throughout the whole thing. So spending money early on,
It does make sense.
Specifically in reading, because you really need reading for math. You need reading for everything, and you needed it at a really young level, so. But we, we've talked about that.
And early childhood, getting them in early.
Yeah.
In a rich environment.
Identifying them early and
Yeah.
Hopefully we can convince the parents to have high expectations, because that is, that's a big predictor of student outcome.
So just a little segue from
I'm just, I'll just say my last little thing. I'm just looking at the, the employees and Northeast Academy and Katherine Knosky are about the same size. The economic need or in CK and the test scores are, you know, there's much more need in, in CK than NEA, and I'm not saying that NEA should have less teachers, but that's just something that kind of stood out to me, that they have the same amount of remedial instruction as, as Northeast and you know, is there the need there?
Okay, that's a good point. So Beth just wrote me and she heard your question about teachers and graduate courses. Appendix B, section subsection D, teachers have to stay two years after receiving graduate payments. Or they have to repay the district. So there you go.
There we go.
Thank you, Beth.
Thank you, Beth.
So they have to stay two years, okay?
Yeah, I guess there's a waiver process, but for military and family relocation.
How did she say that? I do remember this.
You kind of remember that now?
What am I gonna mean for? You were the ones, you're shaking your head going, nah, it's not in there.
So New London, London just closed, so they never closed.
Yeah.
So I guess it's a snow day for everybody.
Well, I was looking at the, the radar.
It looks like a mess is what
Between seven and eight.
Yeah.
All right, well
All right, let's move it on.
Get home before
Yes.
Well, I should hope we're over four, four in the morning.
I'm hoping this is short and sweet. If you go to 572, 573, this is legal. It used to be under the superintendent, but we put it under its own function, district-wide services. And, and this is probably where
You did this already.
Yeah, Anne Marie, you can get going, because I'm all that. Yeah, there's just a few more tabs.
You go already.
Yeah. You have an hour and plus, so. Get home safe and sound.
Yeah.
And have a snow day. I know you, you'll be emailing me in the morning.
We, we're still gonna do our policy tomorrow night by Zoom.
Yes, we can do it by Zoom, no problem. Yeah, we have to get those done. Did you get your packet?
I did. I got the packet. I just went down hall, grabbed it.
She can skip legal. You did legal already.
We did, we did legal the other night.
Yeah.
Ian, if I missed something, call.
Will do.
Okay, so legal services.
No, you did that already. We all have notes.
Yeah. Yeah.
Oh, I did that already?
Yeah.
We don't want to, no, but we don't want to hear that one again.
I was gonna say, this is where we can put some of that healthcare stuff in district wide.
In district wide, yeah.
Oh, the benefits?
Benefits.
I see, I see.
Yeah.
Can finally ask, when was this reviewed? Was it reviewed Monday?
No.
I don't know. I just have notes on it.
I think it was Monday.
I think so too.
Monday, all right.
Oh, yeah, because this was a new packet on Monday. Yes.
When did you do superintendent office? Ninety-six, ninety-seven?
Can I do 92 first, because that's library media, because I want to make sure I cover every page?
What page?
Ninety-two, 592 and 593. I can't wait for this to become your budget, and we can make a final copy of all this stuff. It'll look beautiful. So you can see that we have a media specialist in each of our schools. We do have a retirement of a media specialist at the high school, so we had had an extra teacher, but we won't need an extra library media specialist, so we are going to be reducing by one. So there will be seven proposed library media specialists, one for each school. So we are getting a little bit of a savings there. And then there's some tech assistants at Groton Middle and Fitch High School. One in each. And then we have our video tech and assisted video tech who are always with us at these late night meetings, and we know who they are. They're very helpful. So you see, really, this is mostly the salaries. You see a decrease because we've lost that one position for library media. You kind of see decreases throughout. Actually, a total decrease of 12.3%. Library books are the highest level, and it comes through our site budget, so the library media specialist put together the list and they're constantly refurbishing their library, and I think that's really important. I mean, there've been times when we didn't have that funding coming through the schools, and they weren't buying the books, but I think this is a good sign.
Are you, are you, 149, are you saying that Mark and Caitlin are not gonna have any overtime?
They sometimes have overtime, certainly like at these meetings, but they do flex their hours so that there's not so much overtime.
So is it reasonable to put a zero figure?
I will check to see what it has been, just to make sure.
Or better yet, maybe they're enjoying it so much they you can charge them.
Okay, I'll check.
Questions on these two pages? Dean?
I want to know what Ian has added to this.
What have you added?
They did a referral to record all the subcommittee. That's what he's talking.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we should send the bill to Ian, right?
Right.
Okay, can we move?
No, no, Jen.
I'm sorry, Jen.
Mine's a comment. Again, when Beverly and I went to the middle school, I'm assuming she may be the retirement, but they were wonderful in there, both the librarian and and the technician. You could tell they were really engaged.
Groton Middle.
Groton Middle, they were
Retirement.
Okay, they were really engaged
Yeah.
with the student.
They are.
And trying to make it a welcoming environment. At least that's what I got, right? So kudos to that team.
Yep, the space might have been a little small, but all the activity going on.
Not enough space at that middle school.
Yeah, no.
That was, that was the construction crew at the State Department who did that.
Yeah.
Okay. Next is your budget, Board of Ed, 594, 595. And this is Connecticut Association of Boards of Ed affiliation, membership. It's sometimes, you know, it provides our legal and policy guidelines, best practices and professional development for board members, including annual cave conference.
The contingency is non-laps in fund?
Yeah, that's where they put the contingency. That's new this year.
Yeah, that's a, that's a new, that's a variety of things. I have to look at that closer to see what's in there.
Would you be able to
I think there was an area for, you know how we talked about repairs and making sure we had some kind of contingency for when water, you know, fillers blow and when we have floods and we have those things that happen, boilers go.
So they In one of the first packets you gave us, you gave us a listing of it.
Okay. Mike?
So for that contingency, I can see the rationale for putting in the Board of Education, because we'd have to vote on it. However, all the reasoning and all the examples seems like they fall on facilities and maintenance. It really does, and so and I think the facilities and maintenance budget was, if not mistaken, down this year. I think it might be a good idea to put, put that in, like thoughtfully put it in to, to code there, because I, I understand the need for contingency, but I have a feeling we'd always be going back to Sam anyway, and
So you want to put the contingency line in Sam's budget?
Yeah, because there's because, yeah, we have like, because we there's talk about like deferred maintenance and things like that. It just seems like that's a reality, and it could be, and property loss seems like it would be good there, because as it is, it's literally in our main early pages, it's literally the last line just hanging out there. And, and it looks like it could be for anything, which I see how it could be, but I think we can expect most of these needs are going to be facilities based.
I think they mostly were. Those, those are the things that popped into my head when I was remembering it. But let me just double check to see if there are other contingencies that might fall somewhere else.
Yeah, and, yeah, true, and because considering the, the scope of our infrastructure, this is not, not a big amount in terms of uncertainty that we might have to deal with.
And really, the board has nothing for to spend contingency money on.
No, I don't know why it ended up in your function, to tell you the truth, but I didn't do that front. That part I didn't do.
If we needed something outside of
More snacks, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I was
I buy you your snacks.
I was just gonna reallocate this to board salaries and benefits.
Yeah.
What's that?
Did you say?
Yeah.
Exactly. I think, I think they're worth every dollar of our current salaries.
Looks like we got away without that.
I know.
We know what that's
No, unless it was when we had Nick Caruso come in, one of those people to come in to do professional development or
Is that like, maybe like, because we didn't have an offsite?
I don't know. I, I will find out what that was. It was back in the actuals for the FY24.
Wouldn't that be for the cave, when you pay for a cave?
No, that's all up in professional services. That's 331. Those are your that's your professional development. Oh, 331?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, that's, that's your cave.
331?
That, that's the work That, that's the workshop. That's the going to the.
Oh, going to the cave conference.
Conferences.
But we went last year, so there should have, oh, oh, you put no budget.
I guess we didn't have a budget, but we.
But we still go.
Don't ask me.
Okay.
So you're gonna find out about the contingency.
Yes, I will look into the contingency.
Alright, next page, five ninety-six. Any other question? Thank you. Next page, five ninety-six.
This is the superintendent and the assistant superintendent.
Make sure you cut this budget.
Re administrative assistance, I'm not even paying attention. Um, and I don't have any overtime. But I got a lot of overtime. Um, receptionist is in there for some reason, um, you know, the person who sits out at the front desk. And um. There's some, um. Talks about some part-time directors in the D O D E A STEM, D O D E A. Career pathways and those are the project managers that are paid through the grants. So they're just um, you know. Highlighting that. And then, of course, you have the administrative salary, the clerical administrative salaries. Um, the temporary, we have a clerical admin temp, um, not in my office, but probably out in the front office. To help support enrollment and usually during those very busy times of year when we're bringing in a lot of submarines. And again, I think putting these insurance and benefits somewhere else will be helpful. We do have um, professional services, three thirty-one, so that's between um, both Anne Marie and I for um. You know, professional development. We also um, used to have legal services. You see, that was taken out and moved to that other section.
It was a district wide.
District wide.
How come they tell me time isn't district wide? Why is it under your budget?
It should be district wide. I think that's another thing that they talked about. Which line was that? I want to circle it.
And I understand that's in your budget.
It shouldn't be. I think it should go district wide. What do you think?
That's what I think.
And social, yeah. Social security because we get teacher retirement. But it could be, oh, we do have those clericals, so they would get social security, but I think if all of that moves over to district wide, it'll help. Understand it. There's still postage, even though um, it looks like, did I take out postage?
Yeah, it is.
Everything is so digital now. We do everything through parent square, so it's rare that we have to do post.
Well, we move post this district wide too.
Oh, okay, that's where it went then.
We move that stuff. So you won't get no travel, five eight two? You got travel in FY twenty-five, but did you move that district wide?
Yes, I did.
I think that did go district.
Did that go district wide, travel?
Yeah.
There is that travel for conventions and workshops for the two of us.
I guess you don't fly anywhere.
Well, if we do, it's on DODIA.
Oh, it is?
Yeah.
Okay.
The annual DODIA, but that's all through the brand.
I was like, you can't get anywhere.
And even though there's amount of food, you see zero, and I mean to tell you zero, so it basically is, you know. If we have to provide something, I have to do a shout out for Ernie because through his enterprise fund, he has helped support. Um, our professional learning, you know, in the beginning of the year and um, you know, the November and the March date. Um, so I'm really grateful to that. So we have had some cost efficiencies because of that.
Oh, line five thirty-one, five forty, five fifty and five eighty-two all went to district wide.
Thank you.
Oh, it did?
Yeah.
So that.
Four forty-one went to district wide. And four thirty, they all went to district one.
What code is district wide?
It is seventeen hundred. Function seventeen hundred on page five seventy-three.
Susan, then, um, I'm sorry, Susan, like um, if something got. If something got shifted. Like um, you should do a restatement of prior year, right? So. It doesn't look like.
We didn't put anything like that postage for the um, going district. I'm gonna put down the district wise.
Yeah.
No, no, so here's the thing. So like, if you had zero um, in twenty-six, right? But your budget is in twenty-five, then your actuals for twenty-three, twenty-four, but you should just remove that. From here and then put it so that you can have a fair comparison, because it's implying that you went down.
We need to shift that whole.
Yeah.
They say it in the narrative.
Yeah, or something.
Yeah.
This way it makes it a fair comparison.
Hmm, I agree.
But it's just, just saying it in the narrative and, and then in the narrative, um, include the legal is moved. That's a good one. And then if, if you go that route, um, the FTE chart, the clerical administration. That has a lot higher numbers because that's the HR department.
Yeah.
Part two. So in one oh five administration, there should be another line that just has the HR director. In here, so it'd be one in, you know, adopted, probably adopted in actual and then proposed would be zero and the change would be negative one. So it's consistent with how you dealt with the clerical administration.
That makes a question. Okay.
I will.
Good.
Almost done with the math. So, um, I can, I can. The, if you, when you add the three function codes, seventeen hundred, twenty-three fourteen and twenty-three twelve.
Wait, seventeen hundred?
Yep.
Tell me again.
Twenty-three fourteen.
Uh huh.
Which is um. Which is HR.
Mm-hmm.
And this one. We get um, two million eighty thousand dollars, six twenty-four. Um, now. I can finish doing the math. The percent increase is gonna be about eleven or twelve percent. So if we try to compare apples to apples, bottom line number, because all of these other numbers are kind of mixed up right now.
We split it all up, so it's hard to track, right? Yeah.
So um, but to me, so are we adding any FTEs between these three offices or two offices, I guess? I mean, there was something on the FAQ about something moving from a. Grant into. Or. Right, increase. Is a reclassification of two positions and student registrations, one FTE, one, one temp into HR. You know what that is?
Where are you reading that?
That's on the FAQ.
Say that again?
Alright, it says, um, so I added, you know, talked about that, the increase and um. Says it's a reclassification of two positions into. In student registrations, one FTE and one temp into HR's new function code.
So. It's. The registration office has to report to other departments, so that would be why that was shifted to HR. So you have someone who's a registrar and then you have that temporary person. Um, who also assists HR, assist registration. That's what I'm understanding.
So where do they move from? From where to where?
To find out where they move from.
You'll get the answer to that.
I'll get, I'll get that answer. I'm gonna registrar in the temp.
Um, so that being said, um. Yeah, it's an eleven percent increase. So um, I, you know, so this is like the biggest increase of every, out of all the. Teaching and learning and in, or out of the whole, I shouldn't say the whole budget, but it, it's a bigger increase than a lot of the.
But remember, we also have those salaries, so those could be off. So when we get rid of the benefits, I mean, the benefits. If we put the benefits in that district wide, um, I think we're gonna see a clearer picture of what that percentage actually is.
Um, maybe. I, and I, I don't disagree if that's possible, but to me, I see an eleven percent increase in every, in more than everything else and. And last year, when it was time to cut, we cut over a hundred. Staff members that work directly with students every day. And these offices are obviously very important, but they didn't really take much for cuts, if any, I, I don't believe. Um, so, so when we think about, you know, where money should be allocated. Um, you know, I know it takes a lot of work to run a district. But. It also takes a lot of work to teach kids.
It does. And teaches.
So, so I just like a, a very answer of exactly where that eleven percent came from.
But where the percent is not always, um, you know, depending on. The amount of increase, the percent, you have to look at both the increase out of the, you know. Out of what the base is.
Yeah, well, I know legal went up by, what, seventy thousand something, right? So, so that's, you know, that's a portion of it.
Legal services in this budget went, is um.
Well, it went to nothing, but it, but it turned into.
Into.
It turned into a hundred and.
I think we need to put the district wide stuff where the district wide stuff goes and then take a look at it.
Yeah, legal and district wise, a hundred and ten thousand.
Or maybe if you can just, i- if, if we can have a comparison sheet, that's one sheet with all of these things, we can actually go year to year. Because the way it's presented, it's just extremely hard to go year to year in twenty-three categories.
So you're talking superintendent, HR and district wide.
And one of the function codes, seventeen hundred for district wide.
Yep.
Twenty-three twelve for superintendent. I don't remember the other one.
Twenty-three.
HR. Twenty-three fourteen.
Twenty-three fourteen.
Okay.
So if you add those, it's two million eighty thousand. You know, up from one eight seventy-four.
I think at least with respect to the legal fees, it's not that we're going to be charged a hundred and ten thousand dollars. I think that's one of these areas where we could be. So you're trying to superintendent think sort of. What could be, we, what can we be running into?
Especially with the big negotiations that we have coming up.
Because there are a number of line items and that's one of them that can be pretty open-ended.
Hmm, yeah.
And so it's probably, it's better to err on the higher side. Uh, and hope that we don't, you know, wind up spending it, but if we, if we do, we've, we've allocated the money for it, at least.
So.
I'll see what I can do.
That, and then there's clarity on the FTE between.
Got it.
Offices.
Yep, I get it.
Ian?
Yeah, I just wanted to reiterate or just uh, support what Dean was saying, especially in regards to the legal fees. Or anticipated, anticipated legal costs. Uh, I think, you know, looking into the future, we should definitely be, uh, you know. Preparing ourselves for. You know. Be ready. Because, you know, as, as Matthew was talking about, you know, there, there could be a number of shifting sands as far as like where our funds come from. You may need to do a good bit of research and have legal opinions to back it up when you have to assert a position one way or another.
Jen?
So I just sort of wrote some in really fast, right? Like from the three sheets. Um, clerical administration is up like a hundred thousand. Um. Minority recruitment, um, advertisement, thirty-five thousand, that's part of it there. Like repair of equipment, if you're looking at the two, three, one, two, it really isn't a decrease, it's just a shift, so that's zero. Rental equipment is zero for a change. Um. Advertising is up by like five thousand. So those are some of the key places, just by writing it, I.
I mean, down by five thousand?
It's up by five. No, no, like if I put all three sheets together.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so that's where.
Make a chart so you can see them all together.
Yeah.
Yeah, maybe we just have one sheet.
Yeah.
That helps us understand.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Leave it in the three different spots.
Right, yes, okay.
Military service.
Um. We skipped over five one oh two and five one oh three. That's the school administrators.
Oh, I totally did that. I did write that down.
One oh two and one oh three, and then we can do. Military.
I thought we did that one.
Oh, we might have.
Did we? I had a note on it, says e-finance. Did you guys have notes on yours?
We'll take a look at it quick to see if you see anything you want to ask about.
One oh two and one oh three.
I don't think we did that.
You don't think, okay, I might have just.
I got my stickies and I didn't think.
I thought it might have been a day when I wasn't here.
I don't have any notes on mine.
Okay.
Me neither.
For twenty-four ten.
Okay, I probably wrote it in the wrong spot.
But there's no change in staffing or any.
No change in staffing, no. Um. It's a five point three increase in wages. It's um. Got its benefits in there.
Um, question?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Is this a situation where you may want to consider moving uh, postage, admin costs, printing? Like the five thirty-one, five fifty, five eight two, five eight four?
District wide.
District wide?
Um, well, I think this is coming through the schools. I think this is probably coming through. Site budgets and things like that, so I would keep it with the school administrators, but I will ask.
Anything else on this page?
Mostly decreases.
Yeah, the supplies.
Yeah, for the school admin.
Oh, um, oh, mentioning the site budgets, that did just trigger a memory. Do, do we have a breakdown of like each site? Using the same function codes?
What do you mean?
Like say. You know. At Charles Barnum, you know, how they.
The site budgets, I thought I saw that in this book.
With a similar function codes, so we understand like. Like, that little wedge, this little site budget takes these. District budget.
Did we only see it with object codes?
I think we only saw it from the macro view. Option.
I feel like that was in.
I'm looking for, I'm looking at four, three.
Four, three?
So staffing for the schools, but they don't have the funding, it's just the staffing.
I think it might be somewhere else, but they're, they're, but they're, they're bundled.
Somewhere.
But they're bundled with like a, you know, a couple object codes together.
Okay.
And so.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, it's in the earlier sections, just to kind of bundle it.
It's two, two.
Two dash two. You see it?
Yeah, so it's the object code level.
Yeah. Sort of, you know.
Yeah, okay, never mind.
So, yeah.
Should make more work for Susan.
No, so the function codes would go with elementary versus secondary, right? So, um, but the object code tells you.
Yeah.
Well, I see.
The tools are there too, Susan.
I knew I saw it. I wasn't going crazy.
Susan, I have some other supplies online, six nineteen that went down a lot. Went down forty-eight thousand dollars.
They would be very efficient. And then you want to look at the um, military. Tell me again what number.
Five four.
Oh, all the way up at the front. We had it, we used to have it in the back.
Five four.
Yeah.
All I know is um, the program really benefited from having money in the budget this year. We were waiting for codes till the end of the year, remember?
Hmm.
How we had to. Um, so they still have the fifty thousand dollars in there. And the goal is to double our number of kids and they're, you know, really showcasing what they're doing and um. Trying to, you know, get more eighth graders interested and um. That is gonna pave the way for becoming officially J R O T C and getting the government to pay for it.
So this ostensibly.
And supplies and.
Does he have a timeline on it? Sorry, forgive me?
Uh, I was gonna say ostensibly, um, you know, um, this could become, this would be a decrease. Once the military picks.
Well, it, it will pay for the teacher. It actually pays for two teachers.
Right.
Um, and this is what New London has told us and it supplies, materials, curriculum.
Those, that's fifty thousand dollars that could be allocated elsewhere in the budget.
And then whatever the teacher costs too, it's in my budget.
Okay, so that's uh.
Yeah.
Approximately like seventy to eighty.
No.
On top of the fifty.
Yeah.
Right.
It's a really great program.
So it's over a hundred thousand dollars in savings or reallocations we could look at. Um, and how far along on the timeline are we on that?
Um, well, we. We had a little bit of a decline from last. Um, well, we, we had a little bit of a decline from last year to this year. So I think that, um, you know, they're really trying to get out there in the public eye and, you know, encourage. Well, so I think there were, we started out with, um.
And students?
Seventy five students and I think we're down to like fifty or something like that.
Okay. Well, that was like that last year, right? Where they started out, like there's a, a bit of a drop off, people who signed up and then, you know, once they realize, you know, what it's all about, yeah, maybe like, you know, there's always gonna be a little bit of drop off within a year. But overall, average wise, like those that completed the full year, to those that are on track to complete the full year this year. Are we? Down a little, a little less.
Little less, yeah.
Like in dozens or?
I don't know, I was trying to count them on the floor when they were doing their inspection.
Gotcha.
And I think I got up to forty or forty five, so, yeah.
All right.
Well, this is what the second year of this.
Second year and, and. Lieutenant Commander Henkel is doing a magnificent job.
Yeah.
He is amazing.
Matthew, you, oh, you love that?
Uh, well, I had one more question was just like, um, is it a strict numbers thing or are there other measurements?
There's other measurements. I mean, certainly these inspections and they got rave reviews at this last inspection. Um, but I would say that the numbers really do matter.
And is it like they're looking for a certain amount to be steady state?
I don't know if it's a percentage.
Can't be exponentially increasing, they can't, they can't expect constant growth.
I mean, I, I think that we would love to see like, let's say a hundred kids.
Of course, yeah. But I mean, it's not, it's not gonna, I'm, I'm saying, I guess the metric they're using doesn't require us to have fifty one year, seventy five the next year, a hundred next year, you know, like, it doesn't need infinite growth.
I have to find out for you. I don't know exactly. Terry was telling me like this.
Right, that's not a sustainable model. I mean, this is gonna be more or less a steady state.
Percentage of the total population.
Okay.
Do you have to, oh, you do, you have to have.
If you're gonna go ROTC, they, they're looking for kind of a number.
So it's not like roughly ten percent, cause isn't there like nine hundred fifty, somewhere around there? Yeah, thousand kids.
So that's why it says a hundred.
A quick pivot.
Yeah, yeah.
This is front of mind now. Could we, at some point, like, uh, April or so, once we get clear the budget, maybe, uh, have a sit down with, or schedule as a, as an agenda item to like, look at how we can, like, bolster that program and help it like.
Yeah.
You know.
I would say let's bring bid with some of the kids and talk to them about that. It took us ten years to get this thing going.
Like one of our COWs.
Yeah, yeah, cause, yeah, I have some ideas.
I'd love to do a career pathway thing for you all and for the council and the RTM. I'm just so excited about that work.
And I'd love to hear what the kid, the cadets have to say, like what they think could help grow the program.
So I think we did it, but I think you have more. I'm sorry, question.
No, uh, my question's been answered.
So, so, yeah, my question, um, so it's fifty thousand dollars, that's just for supplies in this budget, right? Uh, the teachers aren't in this line.
Yeah.
And, um, but in last year's budget, it was zero. So, um, so what's new between last year and this year? And then if we've got fifty students, that's a thousand dollars for stu- per student. I still don't have a good feel for what, what we're actually getting.
Last year, the board, um, did put in fifty thousand. I don't know why it's not showing up here or if it was in a different line item. Maybe this is the first time we put military science in its own bucket. I think it came through the high school, but it was fifty thousand. And it's supplies, but I know the transportation for their after school events is also part of what we need to provide, um. They've done drone competitions, but I think the drones are, um, often through a grant through DOD and then there's also stipends for the after school for the adults who are in the program. So I don't know where those stipends measure into this, if it even is coming through here. But this definitely says supplies.
Yes, so if we get.
Are some other costs.
So I think that'd be good to have the breakdown. So one in the budget narrative, uh, you know, mentioned it was somewhere else last year, wherever it was. And, and then, uh, a breakdown of what it is, cause it, I mean, it's a thousand dollars for student. I could, actually could see how that would add up to it, but it is pricey for a student, but I guess your point is that this would grow.
Right.
Uh, and, and then you need to invest at this point, but just, this seems like a lot and it looks new based on what I saw, but apparently.
So their uniforms and, you know, we did get coats and they will recycle them, just like a uniform for sports or whatever, or band. And, um, you know, but there are probably replacement sizes that need constantly buying different size kids.
It, it just seems generous, but, but this might be like upstart costs, right?
It was the generosity of the sport because we knew that he was looking for funds and it was hard to find. And so I think that was a bump start and hopefully this will, you know, we'll be able to take it down and get more kids fill it up, so.
Anything else on this page? Did you do transportation already?
Yeah, we already did. Sam was in here for that.
And anything else that you went down with the budget?
Well, you're not done.
No, no.
More work to do, so that's part, that's it.
No, the presentation.
Oh, okay. All right, um.
Just to go back to military science, I didn't know what you did further on. There was a function code ten ninety one that had it at fifty thousand. And it was deleted from this book is what I wrote.
But where in ten ninety one?
It's not here anymore.
No, we haven't.
We're, we're here. Oh, it's just early, it's at five, five.
Oh, wait, all right. Yeah, never mind. I wrote a note like three pages later than said. Previous version, all right, yes. I'll learn to count soon.
All right, so preparation for February tenth budget work session. Okay, so now the budget is officially our budget, okay?
We have some work to do.
Yeah, so on Monday, we're gonna have the, uh, public here and then we're gonna go into a budget work session. How do you wanna go through our, the budget that Susan's gonna give us? At, you know, what are your thoughts? You wanna go? Section by section, or you wanna come in and say what your priorities are or what you, what?
What you want me to go look at?
Yeah.
See something increasing, I want you to go check this out or check that out. And I'm gonna keep a tracker sheet, so whatever you ask me to do. I'm gonna keep it tracked, so we don't have anything that we miss this year. I heard you loud and clear last year.
I think Lori coming and giving the FTE green tab overview would help, help set the stage for that.
Come and do that.
Yeah.
Uh, do you have any other suggestions? Okay, cause we can, you look at the principal's wish list. Anything on there that you think we should fund? Any, your thoughts are like, what do you think we should fund that we, that's not in the budget? When do you think we should make reductions? I mean, so come with some ideas, so we can.
Might even start with that wish list, so you can.
My, my thought would be, I mean, just to try to be thorough and, and give everyone a shot to prepare is, if we could just go in, I, I'd like to go in series, like start with, you know, ten ninety one or whatever was, that was page one of the things. And just go page by page. You know, and that way, like, anyone that has any notes in any of those departments could.
Okay, so you wanna start from the beginning and work through the block?
Yeah, the first page that has like real department, yeah, function codes. And then just go all the way through to the, to the very end. And, uh, just, you know. For sure.
I, I, I like going through, like the details, but I also, uh, we hit this in the RTM off, uh, every year. Like, we don't have that overview of like where we wanna get to and that discussion of what, we might not agree on it, but like, do, do we wanna raise the budget by a million dollars? Do we wanna decrease it by a million? Something like that, because as we go through each function, I'm often thinking, well, yeah, military science, that's really good. And then I would say that for maybe every function, but if I've got like sort of a, we need to, like last year, you needed to cut different ways, or we need to add because of student scores, things like that, just having bef- like before launching into the of the, going through, just more of a, a goal, higher level overview. And we like come back to that again, too.
That's a good point, cause this budget is what?
Six point five.
So that's a thought, you know, do you want this budget to remain six point five or how, what's the reduction? If you wanna make a reduction, what do you, you know, what are you thinking for a reduction? But that's for Monday, you can, you know, think about that over the weekend. Have you done Matthew? Have you done Mike?
Matthew and Mike are both done.
Okay.
She asked me.
So I've been thinking about this, as all of you, we've, I've been thinking about this, but I've been looking at it from a level that I, you may have also thought the same way or not, but I haven't heard it articulated. I am, I love the idea of early childhood. I love the idea of focusing on elementary and adding more. I know we have to do more for the, uh, kids as far as reading to get the foundation. And at the same time, and I don't think I'm a Cassandra, at the same time, we know that there are changes coming from the federal government, though we can't define what they are. We know what the state has told us, both from our local reps and when we went to the legislative conference, with the exception, correct me if I'm wrong, Susan, with the exception of perhaps some help on special education reimbursement, which is a senate priority. With that exception, unless there's some major change in the state perspective, we're not gonna get help on much else. The economy is sitting on a razor's edge. We could thrive, or we could go into recession. If we go into recession, property values are gonna go down. Who knows what's gonna happen with the job situation? We don't know. But I think the fact that we know that there are some known unknowns, at least we don't have some black swans here. We have some real serious known unknowns here. I'm gonna be very prudent in how I look at this stuff. I, I don't know what that means, cause I wanna be open minded, but we have to be very, very prudent in what we do. That's a philosophical.
So you'll come in with some prudent ideas?
I will try.
But do you remember at that legislative breakfast when they asked the superintendents around the room, what would happen if you didn't have your title one, two, three, four? And you didn't have this and you didn't have that? And every one of my colleagues said I couldn't run the school district.
Well, I know what, I know what, uh, a now confirmed nominee said about Dodea. I know what other now confirmed politicians, and I'm not trying to argue the merits of what they're, what they're saying. Because that's not our role. I'm just saying what they're saying. Is we, we're ju- just talking about the reality, not opinion. The education department is not going to look like six months from now, what it looks like now. What it's gonna look like, we don't know. Whether the functions stay in one place or they're scattered around or they all disappear, we don't know. We just don't know. Would the economy thrive? Would be if it does. If it doesn't, we don't know. We're just gonna have to be very, very careful and I don't have any specific suggestions.
Um, okay. Jen?
Um, if I were gonna do this, I would like to, um, look at the principal's, um, wish list. Because, um, at least I know I've looked at some and I wanna move forward with some of those investments that they're recommending. I know we probably can't afford some of it, so, um, if we agree to invest on whatever this board agrees to, we might need to cut on some of the stuff that's already in here. Um, and it's more in line of trying to, um, sort of like build that foundation. Um, so that hopefully going forward, like, um, you know, our students are learning how to read and, you know, um, mathematics, um, at an early stage. Um, so there are investments that I do want and I wanna take it globally and like look macro and then go into nitty gritty detail rather than nitty gritty detail working up. Because if we know what we want the district to look like, we can make sound investments. And if it means we need to take from the superintendent's budget to fund where we wanna go, I'm willing to do that.
And I can work with you on that. For instance, if you see an area that you feel can be reduced. And there might be areas that I can work behind the scenes knowing reductions, cause we did find an error from Irene's portion where she had doubled up on a couple positions. So already I know that of a place that can reduce, so I can work with you and go back to the principals and say, can you live without this? Can you shave this down? They're looking to get you this and what can we give up to get what we get? So we can work together on that.
Dean?
Yeah. Yeah.
Mike close him. Ready to speak.
Good eye, good eye. Um, I, I'm typically in the lookout for false economies. You know, the, the old being penny wise and pound foolish. Um, at the same time, I also know that's very difficult. We find it very difficult to figure out whether the money that we spend is actually well spent. Are we getting what we're supposed to be getting? Um, and we have different metrics that we use and then we all agree that they're not really all that accurate. And, you know, the test scores include, uh, the testing includes people who just are not gonna do well on tests and we know why. Uh, that depresses the scores, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Uh, at the same time, yes, we have to be realistic about what this budget is gonna look like. And if we go, I'm happy, 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 and whatever the budget's gonna look like at the end, so be it. We're not the last word, as we all know. This goes to the council. And if the council goes, hmm, and cocks their eyebrows, then we're gonna have to wait for the RTM to pull our bacon out of the, you know, pull our fat out of the fire. So, is that gonna happen? Are we gonna play something like that out? Um, so for Monday, uh, we're gonna be, for Monday's session, I think we ought to be thinking of just what exactly do we think, how, how exactly do we think this is gonna play out?
The crystal ball.
I had something else to say, but I don't think you wanna hear it. I can't remember what it is anyway. Oh, yeah.
I don't wanna forget Jay, cause I got scolded by Jay, cause I forgot on last.
Hey, school.
Jay.
What are your thoughts?
Jay, are you there?
Yes, um.
Okay. What are your thoughts about?
I really don't have a, I really don't have a lot to add other than, I think we all have ideas about whether certain areas that could be uh, boosted or other areas that could be reduced. And so I think we just need to, um, I, I know it sounds like a lot of work, but I think that Ian's suggestion, we just need to go page by page. We all have our ideas and unless we go through in an orderly fashion, um, I think we're gonna be, end up all over the place.
Do you think it's worthwhile to look at those principals' wish lists and see, I liked, um, I like Jen's idea of investments on, you know, what were the, the investments that you're looking at that you'd like to achieve? That maybe aren't here, that could be here. And then that would help us to know what we would have to then reduce to get us back to at least a six point five.
I think we should look at the wish list first and then. Wait a second. Uh, and, and Andrea, you have something to say?
Yeah, I think trigger is dead. Motion to adjourn.
Not yet, not yet. Adrian would not be happy.
I think that, um, you know, I, I don't know how realistic this is, but it's like to find places to cut. First, what we can agree on cutting and then with Mike's thought of having kind of an end game, where do we wanna be? If we can cut more, maybe we can add more, you know, reduce more. I like that word that Jay. But I, I, I don't know the functionality of how that can work. Um, but I also wanna, um, just point out that six point five percent seems like a lot. But, um, I'm pretty sure that all of our taxpayers can figure out that when you move one point three million dollars from one town function to another, there's a net zero. So our actual increase is closer like five point one percent or something like that.
Nurses.
Um, so I think we need to keep saying that because one, um, you know, one part of the town, um, made it look like they, well, shouldn't say it that way. One part of the town, the budget line decreased by a certain amount and our part went up. But it, but it had zero effect on the taxpayer. So we really should be focusing that. You know, we're starting closer to a five percent increase here.
And we have an increased revenue too. Don't forget that, that we, you know, definitely that's gonna save the taxpayer. It's a revenue.
You'll say anything?
Yeah.
Thank you for those words.
Um, yeah, so listening to Mike and Jen and, and, and Jay. I, I think we could probably take a blended approach. Where like, you know, do we open the discussions with like the, the overviews, the wish list consideration? And like maybe a target percentage increase that we would like to try to get to. Um, and then. Um, and then, once we all kind of come to a consensus on that, then go the page by page. And just kinda make the additions or the reductions as we see fit, as we may have made notes on. And then kinda see, you know, how we land after all that. And then, that might mean, okay, a second like quicker run through. But, um, or like some other like high level adjustments. But I think, I like the idea of kinda like doing kind of a, a broad view first. And kind of like a, a goal setting with like, you know, investments and. You know, overall percentage increase and then get into the granular stuff. But I, you know, I, I'm glad Jay supports the idea of being systematic about it. Cause I think that's the best way to do it, to make sure that everyone has an opportunity to speak on every function code.
And Sam's at the end, so it, it all falls on him.
When you come on Monday. Come with idea, like, where do you want this budget to be? Just what Ian said, you wanna repeat it again, Ian, real fast?
Um, yeah, basically like, you know, a blend of what Mike and Jen were saying as far as like, you know, consider like what investments we wanna make, what reductions? You think we can live without? And then like overall percentage, what's a reasonable percentage overall that we wanna get to as a goal?
And I'll try to go in the background to see if we've already benefited through some of this. At least from the central office perspective and, you know, share with you too.
Yeah, if you, I mean, you mean like you might have some progress changes?
We did find, Lori just said that there were a couple positions that Irene got in two different buckets, like doubled up on, so we can shake those off.
I would ask if, if that, that, if that happens, that's great. Um, if it's organized by a function code, then as we get to that function code, we say, oh, hey, by the way, we found this. This efficiency here, this function code.
I can do it that way.
Okay, thank you.
But you've got that tracking sheet now, so that'll, that'll help too.
You're done?
I'm good, thank you.
Thank you for those words and wisdom.
Appreciate it.
So for some, some time, I've thought of another potential way of approaching, uh, cost reductions. Many businesses, small and large. Use another resource, their employees. And I would offer and I'd ask you guys to consider and come back, maybe it's a poor idea, maybe it's a good idea. Of inviting our employees at whatever level to share their ideas for where there may be efficiencies to save money. Uh, if the concept is worthwhile, then the question is how we can structure that. And I have some ideas for that, but we'll save it to first to see if you think that that may be a good idea. To consult those who know the district best for ideas, not every idea submitted will be, one will accept, but you know. Million here, a million there, and pretty soon you're talking real money.
That's a good idea and that's a tradition here. I've done it with central office admin, I've done it with principals too, so it can, I said that, kinda thing can be simultaneous.
And, and it could, it could come from every level of our employees.
Okay, and, um, also on Monday, we will be going into executive session, it will be in person only. So if you don't come to the meeting, you will not be part of the executive session, just to give you heads up on that. And, oh, next item is a board retreat, we really need to have a board retreat and, um. I mean, this, the, these last two meetings, in my opinion, went very well, but, uh, we. Hopefully we can stay on that track, but we really need to have a board retreat and have some heart-to-heart conversations. And, um, talk about board goals too. Are you in favor or against doing it on a Saturday morning? From like nine to twelve?
Okay, but that doesn't mean you can't do it.
Well, no, we want everybody to be there, so it'll have to be in the evening.
It won't be Sunday morning, I can almost guarantee that.
I can't do Sundays.
Or, or Saturday afternoons and.
Saturday afternoons would be okay for me, sure, I'm out by twelve thirty.
Then, can, Mike, can you give up a Saturday afternoon?
I'd really rather not, but, but what month are we talking? Potentially, but rather not.
Cause it, cause when you do it in the evening, I, I want everybody to be fresh when we do this, not drag again and, you know, so.
What about like a Sunday midday?
Oh, I'd have, I, I'm just saying the whole weekend.
You, you have an easy job here, professor.
I know you have a family too, Adrian, can you give up a Saturday morning?
Uh, I will probably be in the same schedule for Saturdays as Mike. Um, where probably a couple of Saturdays that I'll be able to do. I don't know what those are, you know. Well, you probably won't do any, so I'll just ask if you know when that's gonna be.
I don't, I don't remember, but then there's also another activity from another kid that'll start coming up quite a bit, so.
Well, can you do Saturday, Dean?
I don't have any more kids to mind.
But do you ever wanna do an evening but earlier to get started or food dinner?
Yeah, like four.
Make a nice hour-long meeting would be fine. Hour-long retreat.
Friday afternoon?
Yeah, like, you know, I could start early on Fridays.
Like around four?
Yeah.
What do you think about that, Dean?
Depends, depends on the Friday, that's the, that's the problem, yeah, ordinarily, yeah, sure. Ordinarily, I could do Saturdays, I guess. Unless my wife says, oh, by the way, we're doing this, oh, well, I guess so, I can't go to the board thing.
So, right now, it seems to me that we'll have to just pick a day and whoever could come. Cause I don't think we're all gonna get on, you know. It seems like we're not all gonna be on the same day.
I'll, I'll give up Friday night if that'll work for anybody.
Tomorrow, come in here?
Beverly, if we have, Beverly, if we have. Beverly, if we have enough time, if we have a date, we can all make. Our, our schedules fit a Saturday or a weekend, but I think you're correct about an evening meeting, I think it's. It's a fruitless, but I think that if we have enough time and we all know the date, we can all make it work.
That's not gonna be true for me, so. But, you know, I don't need to be there.
So we'll pick a Saturday day in March, we'll pick two dates and see how we go and get them out for you. And if they work, they work, if they don't, whoever could come, just come.
Nice venue is the Nautilus, they have a classroom there and they have everything and.
You mean in the submarine itself, it's kind of.
Thank you, everyone, I thought it was a productive meeting, I don't know you all. And Susan interrupted me, I'm gonna. Andrea, go ahead.
Can I resurrect my, uh, my motion? Well, Trigger is very.
I'm second.
Seconded by Matthew, all those in favor?
Alright, aye.
Oppose, the tension.